Good evening, welcome to Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, February 10th, 2020. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Excused.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
We have a quorum. Agenda item three, considering accept the town council minutes of Monday, January 27th, 2020. Is there a motion? So move.
Second.
Errors, corrections, submissions. Counselor Steves.
Two minor ones. One, under agenda item five, K should be Case Street. And under item number 16, under my paragraph, the fourth paragraph down, the primary, the early voting is February 24th through the 28th, not just those specific dates.
Any further errors, corrections, or missions?
Seeing none, all those in favor as amended, opposed, in air, must all present.
Subcommittee reports, General Government Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on February 4th, and several of the items are on our agenda tonight. And so we'll get to them when we get to them. We also discussed the keeping of Pat Spiala, which is not here yet, but we will end up dealing with that up here at some point in the near future.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
And I do now have one scheduled at the moment.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, I chaired the meeting for Counselor Nash, who was excused and out of town. Several items on the agenda here tonight, and we'll discuss those as they come forward. Education and Human Services Counsel Lazo.
We did have a meeting. We will speak to the agenda items, and we have no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Plan and Development Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on January 30th. The agenda items number 18 and 19 are on tonight's agenda. I have not scheduled one yet for later on this month, but I believe early March we'll have another plan and development. That's all I got.
Thank you. Protection of persons' property Counsel Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, we did have a meeting last week. I can't remember the exact date. I apologize. I believe it was Thursday. All the agenda items from that meeting are on here tonight for the transfers, and I'm just going to say this because we have a lengthy agenda, that everything, all the transfers, they pass unanimously at the PPP.
Thank you.
I don't have any meetings scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman's announcements. I have two quick announcements, because as Counsel Manna alluded to, we do have an extensive agenda with a great presentation on a project here in Southbridge. On February 2nd, 2020, I proudly represented the town council for the 100th birthday of longtime resident Gertrude Le Duke, Fins and Tails. I was able to present her with a citation from the town of Southbridge, as well as a citation from Representative Durant. So we'd like to congratulate her on her 100th birthday. Also, on January 31st, I had the pleasure of attending a graduation for Deputy Chief Hewlic. He graduated from the Chief Fire Officer Management Program, the highest training program that they have here in Massachusetts for fire chiefs and chief officers. Congratulations to him for that program that he worked hard to continue his professional attributes for the Southbridge Fire Department, and look forward to working with him in the future. With that, Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll also be brief. We're continuing to work on the budget process. Been meeting with department heads on a one-on-one basis, going through their budgets and talking about their capital items. Been obviously doing that with our Finance Director in preparation of a presentation to the town council of the town budget this year. We also would like to add to the chairman's comments about our Deputy Chief Joe Hewlic. I also had an opportunity to attend that event, and I want to congratulate him for his hard work and efforts as well. Recently, town council should have gotten update from our police chief with regard to our central dispatch. And I apologize, I'm still got a cold, so I'm sounding a little funny. But central dispatch is continuing to move forward. They ripped out the old dispatch station, and they're painting and fixing the walls and doing those things, getting prepared for the dispatch. And they recently had the chief send a memo to me and to all the councilors with the update there as well. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations. This evening, pleased to welcome Chip Norton to provide a presentation, and we have some action items, hopefully that will go forward. Chip Norton is bringing forward a proposal for Southbridge Innovations, Southbridge Mills, a project at 515 Case Street, which is part of the American Optical property. Chip had asked us to meet with him, and Town Manager Counsel Adams on plan and development, myself, met back on January 22nd, and had a good conversation about what his proposal was and what he was looking to do. Counsel Adams at the time had recommended that this come forward because of the scope of the project and the details, rather than to have it go once to a subcommittee and then back up to council for the same presentation, so that the whole town and the council itself could look at the presentation all at once. We had it come directly to council. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments on this?
Just one short, brief comment. It's been a pleasure to work with Chip and Franklin Realty, who've been a real partner with the town of Southbridge. As many of the councilors know, this was a project that's been under consideration for quite some time. And Chip, in the past, had brought this project before one of our council, county council subcommittees some time ago, and it got tremendous support in that meeting when it occurred. I think we all will recognize, and when you see this presentation, that this takes an old, somewhat abandoned piece of property and refurbishes it and turns it into something that I think that all of us could be proud of. So I think it's a good presentation. And with that, Mr. Chairman, you can go back to our presenter.
Okay. Thank you. Chip?
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, manager. For those who don't-
You might have to remove that microphone, because it's-
How's that? Is that better? I'm struggling with the cold also, which I think Ron gave to me a couple of weeks ago when I met with him. Those who don't know me, my name is Chip Norton. I'm Managing Director of Franklin Realty, and I'm the owner of the Southbridge Innovation Center, which is the former American Optical headquarters site. Tonight, we're specifically, I'm specifically here to talk about K Street end of the property, which is slated for residential redevelopment. What I thought I'd do, if it's okay, is take a couple of minutes beforehand and just talk about the overall development of the property, what we've tried to accomplish over the last couple of years since the last time I was in front of the councilors. To refresh folks' memory, the site is 1.2 million square feet of building area, 14 buildings, covers 150 acres, of which about 20 to 30 of those acres are development land. To date, we've leased about half the property, 535,000 square feet, which includes the Hotel Conference Center, and we have available about 650,000 feet left to go. I'll talk a little bit about that space and our plans, but right now, we have uses on the site include, obviously, the Hotel Conference Center. We also have office, manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, and tonight we'll talk about the housing initiative that we're working on. Over the last couple of years, we've been working on two or three major projects to enhance the future development of the project, mainly around renewable energies, as well as listing the property on the National Register and an overall master plan for the remainder of the property. First initiative is the development of a cogeneration plant, which is the old plant on-site that provides all the utilities in the park. A year and a half ago, we converted that to cogeneration, which is one of the most efficient renewable energy producers known in the United States. Basically, what we do is we produce our own electricity through a gas-fired gen set, which is the left-hand picture, upper-left-hand picture, and the waste product from that gen set, the heat, basically is captured to convert to steam, hot water, and actually chilled water for cooling. Right now, we have a 1.1 megawatt capacity. That handles about 70% of our electricity in the park, and about 90% of our thermal needs. And the idea is, as we continue to grow and lease the park, we would add on components to the facility and just grow the cogeneration. We've also been working on for the last two years other renewable energy projects, specifically solar and hydro. The park, up till the mid-'50s, had a hydro wheel in the dam at the Lendsdale Pond, which was abandoned, and we're trying to recreate that. Both of these projects are in the early application phase with National Grid. The solar project will be about four megawatts, which is more electricity than we could possibly need, but a portion of that will be sold offsite as well as retained. And the hydro project is a, will handle about, provide about 10% of our electrical needs. The other major initiative is putting, listing the property on the National Register, which we completed in 2016 with preliminary approval. What that means, basically, is based on the history of the buildings, their architectural significance, and the use that was there, the industrial use by American Optical dating back into the early 1900s, that these are worthy buildings to be restored, put back into service, and they need to be put back in generally the same condition that they were when they originally built. What that allows us to do, besides restoring the buildings to the original state, is it allows us to access federal and state tax credits, which in this market allows us to reduce our capital costs and become competitive with other markets around Massachusetts and in the region. And I'll talk a little bit further about that as we talk about the K Street development. And then lastly, we're, over the last year, we've been working on a master plan for the overall property, which is basically, I think as folks noted, we took the fence down last year, and starting to get the property more open as a mixed-use park and open to the public. And as part of this initiative, this will include new work to the roadway systems inside, which will also include sidewalks for pedestrians, river access and use to the Lendsdale Pond and the river, and then hiking and biking trails. And this is a couple of renderings. To your left is the access for kayak and boating on Lendsdale Pond, and then to your right is the public access to boardwalks along the pond and the river, which once again would be open to the public. Our flagship in the property, as you folks know, is the Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center. We built that in 2000, 2001, based on a lease with the Department of Defense. Over the last five or six years, we've become more competitive in the private market as the government has reduced its use of the facility. We've been able to increase the private or public access and use. We've increased the non-government room nights from 8,000 back in 2014. Now we're close to 30,000 room nights projected for 2020, and preparing ourselves for when the lease is up, the end of next year, with the government, at which time we'll basically be a fully private or public access facility. We have a, as you may know, we have a 3,900-square-foot, 250-seat auditorium, which has become really one of the more desirable spaces in Central Mass. We're generating a lot of business out of that. The size of our ballroom are one of the largest in Central Mass. And with the government lease ending in two years, we'll have access to 40,000 square feet of classroom space that the government has used exclusively, as well as another 37,000 feet of office space. All opportunities that we see as a positive for the overall development of the project. Independent of the conference center, to date, we leased 260,000 square feet buildings shown in green. These include office users, Quinssigman Community College, who just renewed their lease for five years, and 5 Optical, which is the smaller building here. We have manufacturers and 15 wells. That's about 109,000 feet. We just introduced into the park a company called Metallogics, a high-tech milling company out of Dudley. We also just did a deal with a House of Destiny and 70 Optical, a temporary space for their church, and then, of course, the cogeneration plant. Of our manufacturers, I think we're showing that we've become kind of a state-of-the-art facility for high-tech manufacturing between Metallogics, who just moved in, Shot North America, and Clean Part. We've got a pretty good nucleus of kind of current high-tech manufacturers in the park. That leaves us with 650,000 square feet of building area left to go, shown in red. The three main buildings, non-residential, 35 Optical Drive, which we're marketing, that's about 195,000 feet for manufacturing, 40 Optical, which is American Optical's all research and development building, we're marketing that for lab, R&amp;D space, and then 50 Optical, 150,000-foot all-concrete building, which we're marketing multi-story for a variety of different uses, data storage, and multipurpose. At the far end of the property, we're working on, that we call the K Street area of the site, this is about 270,000 square foot of two, three buildings, basically. These are multi-story mill buildings, which back in the day served their purpose for manufacturing, but today really need to find an alternative use because of their footprint and also their multi-story nature. These are some of the earliest buildings built by American Optical as part of their initial development. One of these buildings, 515 K Street, we've been working on for two and a half years, designing for 48 units. This building is about 67,000 square feet. This is a rendering of what it would look like as a completed project, and what we call the second phase of the residential development, is the 2535 K Street project, which is going to be about 100 units potentially. This building, the challenge is the depth of this building, so this design shows an open atrium courtyard in the center, as well as parking in the building, and developing about 100 units as part of the Phase Two. 515 K Street, as I said earlier, we've been working on about this about two and a half years. This is just two and a half acre site. It's been abandoned since the late '80s. Center of Hope was our prime tenant there before they moved elsewhere in town. This is 67,000 square feet. It's bounded by what we call the spillway here, which is a runoff waterway from the dam area, and of course, Lendsdale Pond is out in here, and then 135 borders it on the other side. We'll end up with about 53 parking spaces, 31 here on the property, and then the balance across the street. We've designed 48 units, a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units. We see the primary users of these units, smaller families, one or two children, maybe have a little bit bigger family with the three bedrooms, but as you can see, the predominance of the unit count is 31, two-bedrooms, 12, one-bedroom, and five, three-bedrooms. This just gives you an elevation of the building. This is the 5 K Street end here, this two-story structure, and then 15K is the main building with the three stories. This gives you a footprint. As you can see, the majority of the units are located in the main building on three floors, and then the ancillary space in 5K is more support space for the residential project. The appealing factor of this building, first of all, it would be fully renovated, all-new finishes. It's currently in a shell condition now. Everything would be stripped out what's there, and it would be all-new from mechanicals to finishes. The building supports 12-foot high ceilings, very attractive. Oversized windows, one of the unique things about American Optical is all the buildings they built are, the windows are oversized, a lot of glass to allow for natural light to help in their fabrication, the intricate fabrication of glassware back in the day. This will be exposed brick-and-beam construction, basically mill construction, which is very appealing in the residential market today. We'll also have support areas, as this shows, a bike rack area, there'd be community rooms, fitness and yoga, a business center, and a movie viewing room for small gatherings for the tenants. And then, of course, the property in general, it'll have a fenced, I'll show you, fenced-in play area, community patio, landscape walk along the river, a community garden, and then, of course, links to walking trails in the park, as well as access to the conference center. This gives you a vision of the back of the building along the spillway. This is the, basically, the community garden sitting area. To its left is the fenced-in playground. And then to the left of the building, adjacent to 5K Street, is another community sitting area with the parking area to the opposite side, the right-hand side of the building. We're pursuing the development of this project and the financing of it through the LIHTC program. This is a housing program adapted by Congress in 1986. It's basically to promote the rehab of older buildings such as this for affordable housing. It's administered by the federal state Department of Housing and Community in Massachusetts, the Department of Housing and Community Development. And basically, what it allows for is grants and attractive financing to cover the cost to build these projects, so the rents are affordable. As I mentioned earlier, historic tax credits are a major part of the financing of this project, which we are able to access because of now our preliminary designation on the National Register, and that equates to close to 35% of the project costs. The federal-state housing tax credits make up another 35 to 40%, and basically, traditional financing represents about 20 or 25% of your project costs. This project is estimated to be about $23 million total cost, or about $450,000 per unit. Under this program, you can either have 20%, 50% of your units, excuse me, 20% with incomes below 50%, out of 50% of the median income for the area, or 40% at 60%. As you'll see, we're going with the 60% threshold, and then you need to have a minimum of 10% of your units, 30% at or below the median income. Median income is basically the Worcester County area, and that's $72,000 today. This is a very similar program to the Mary Wells Middle School. The only difference is this will now be age-restricted. This is a chart that kind of gives you an idea of the rent savings or concession under this program. So a one-bedroom, current market rent's about $1,200 in that range, and under the 30% model, tenet would be $718, and for the 60% it would be $988. Order of magnitude is 30%, that would be somebody making just over $20,000 a year in income, and on the 60%, about $43,000 a year, based on the current median income range. And then you can see the price for two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, $14.75 for twos and $17.50 for threes, and then the discount or the savings below market on the two-bedroom, 55% for the 30% range, and 23% for the 60. So this gives you an idea of what the target rents are as compared to kind of the market for similar-sized units. Why the LIHTC program? Well, in this economy or this environment in Southbridge, it's very challenging to build a quality product for the market rents. Right now, they're running about $1.50 to $1.75 a foot per month, and currently with construction costs, the rents need to be closer to 2 and 1/4 a foot to justify new construction or the renovation of a building of this type. So without these sort of programs and tax credits available, the economics just don't work to renovate the building 515 to a quality sort of product for living conditions. The LIHTC process, so it's very competitive in Massachusetts. We applied two years ago, got shot down, applied in, excuse me, three years ago, applied in '18, got shot down a second time. Fortunately, this past November, we got accepted into the program, and that's not unusual, as I said, because it's extremely competitive in Massachusetts. There's limited funds, there's obviously more demand in projects than there are funds available. Once approved, you have to file what's called a one-stop, which is due the third week of February. We're in the midst of scrambling around and putting together now, and then once that application is completed, which is basically the majority of all your project information, you then have to wait six to 24 months probably for both the federal and state credits to accumulate, as well as our mass historic credits. Your historic credits from Massachusetts don't come in all at once. You've got to basically wait in line and collect your allocation. Once again, there's more demand on an annual basis for the credits than there are available. We've accumulated about half our credits to date, Massachusetts of 1.2 million versus our total amount of 2.3 million that we're looking to accumulate. One-stop submission consists of 70% project drawings, which are getting completed, market study appraisal, complete environmental review of the project, zoning approvals in place. August of 2018, we received a zoning approval from the town for residential. The overall site is heavy industrial, which does not allow for residential, but we got approval from the town to develop 515Ks for residential. As I mentioned earlier, the collection of your state historic tax credits, securing of construction financing, which we've done. And then the last important piece is the local funding commitment. To date, order of magnitude, we're going to spend probably about a half a million dollars to get the project through the one-stop submission process. So it's a very expensive process with a lot of risk till you finally get your approvals. Local funding commitment, this has become a bigger issue with the state as the marketplace has become more competitive. DHCD is looking for towns and communities to show their support behind a project. This contribution could be in the form of cash or in-kind contribution. The middle school project was required to provide similar sort of in-kind contribution. I don't have the specifics, but basically involved the sale of a building from the town to the developer. And then I put together here just a chart of some recent transactions over the last year or two that have gone through the DHCD process to give you a sense of what those contributions look like. And the towns are down the left-hand side, unit count is second column in. These are all cash contribution projects, and then I calculated the cash contribution on a per-unit basis, and as you can see, they range from a low of $4,500 per unit all the way up to close to $55,000 per unit. So a wide range, obviously depending on the community, as well as the unit count. We've been working with the town for a number of months in coming up with some ways to work through a contribution, and in concept, we've agreed to the town waiving building permit fees, which are estimated by the town to be about $166,000, based on $15 million hard construction costs. This equates to just under $3,500 per unit, which, based on the prior chart, as you can see, is at the lowest end of the spectrum. The numbers that I've seen in discussions with the town, where currently our taxes on this parcel, which is on multiple buildings, is about $250,000 a year. The buildings are not assessed separately, they're all on parcel two, they're all basically one-tax parcel, but the estimate is the increased value to the parcel in this building would generate another 50-plus thousand dollars a year in tax revenue to the town. So a payback of just over three years, based on those numbers. So the benefits of Southbridge Mills, clearly, this is the opportunity to take an abandoned building, which has been that way for 20 to 30 years, convert it to a higher and better use, and basically put up high-quality 48 units into the market at an affordable price for Southbridge residents and those folks from towns around the area, also increase the tax base to the town based on the redevelopment of the building, and basically give a fresh look to that end of the property. This building, as you know, sits right on 131, not a great image either for our project or the town, and this is an opportunity to upgrade the building. And this is an opportunity to upgrade the building and basically give a better look to our project coming from the opposite end in the town.
Councilman, any head of questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Norton. I remember this coming to us a couple of years ago, and now that I see everything, I'm really excited about it. I do have a couple of questions, though. I remember speaking to, hearing about like the help that you're getting from the state and the federal government. So is this all going to be targeted for low-income housing, or is it going to be a combination? And if it's going to be a combination, what percentage has to be targeted for low income, and what percentage would you have for those who don't meet that criteria?
There'll be no market rate units in the mix of 48. Right now, we've got 10% slated for the 30% or below, which is five units, and the balance of the units are for 60% of the median range, income range.
I'm very excited to see something like this come to Southbridge. Worcester has some great old mills that were turned into lofts. It's loft living, that's what it is. And it's the trend today, and I think it's going to be the trend tomorrow and the years to come, too. So thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Chip, could you just, I know when we met, we had some conversations about the fact that, given where the location of the property is and the condition that it's in, you're really hampered by what you can do with that property to market it, and the reasons why you were doing this housing and for this. Could you just, specific to that, to the town?
Yeah, as I said before, I mean, American Optical, most of these buildings were designed specifically for their type of manufacturing, and that type of manufacturing doesn't happen much now in this part of the country or in Massachusetts. These multi-story mill buildings just don't lend themselves for anything like that. So we have to come up with some different ideas. Conversely, 15 Wells Building, which is a story plus, that still works for warehouse distribution and manufacturing, and that's what we've got there. So we've been able to take the buildings that fit the marketplace and redevelop and reuse them based on the market. But these two buildings are multi-story, they don't have good access from a truck dock access standpoint, especially 25K Street, there's really no dock access to speak of there. So based on their location and floor plates and configuration, they just don't lend themselves to manufacturing or warehouse distribution. Not that that would necessarily be the right fit anyways, but they really are limited in their uses because of the configuration, and especially nature of how they were built by American Optical. I mean, the whole park was designed based on their industry, and they just built buildings one at a time, and they grew from K Street all the way to the ender end of the property, building buildings as they needed, whether they be manufacturing, warehouse, administration. So it's a mixed bag, and what our challenge has been trying to find new uses for basically buildings that were built for different types of development.
Any further questions? Council Steve?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Thanks for doing this presentation there, Chip, first of all. One thing I wanted to ask is, I know you mentioned earlier about some of your parking is going to be across Route 131, and that particular stretch is not the world's safest road. I was wondering if you could explain a little bit about how you intend to deal with that.
Agreed. So as part of our, yeah, as part of our working with the town, we agreed to do some lighting as well as a pedestrian flashing crosswalk there that will automatically either be a push-button or solar-powered. So basically pedestrians can have a flashing light to slow down traffic or stop traffic so they can cross there. We think that most of the parking for the tenants will be at the building, most of that parking across the street would be for visitors. So it's not like it could be, unless there'd be a daily user or access situation. And we also worked with the town on some signage, mainly dealing with coming out of K Street, that coming out of there to the left-hand is a turn you can't make. So we're going to configure that and also use signers so people make sure they stay to their right when they come out and don't try to take a left there. So we know that's not a perfect intersection right there to speak of.
Okay. Also, I was curious, where did you get the $72,000 Worcester County area figure that you mentioned?
Worcester County?
Yeah. Where did you get that?
Consultants looked it up. I assume it's correct.
I was just curious, because when I, because last time I checked, for Southbridge's median is around $44,000.
What's that?
Last I checked, Southbridge's median's around $44,000.
Well, Southbridge is $50,700 last time I looked, but this is Worcester County, not just Southbridge.
Right. Yeah, I understand that that's the issue.
So it's the median for the county that you're in.
Okay. Thanks. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple more things to Mr. Norton. Who owns that property? Does Franklin Realty own the property across the street from?
Southbridge Associates II LLC, which I'm the manager.
Okay, okay, so, okay, so that's.
Actually, at this point, a transaction has taken place, I apologize. Southbridge Housing LLC has bought the building, has it under contract from Southbridge Associates II LLC. When you do these projects because of the financing, you set them up as a standalone or single-purpose entity, but I have control of Southbridge Housing as I do Southbridge Associates.
Okay. And also, so, once you get like your plans all settled and, you know, I don't think it's ever going to be settled while you're building because things always come up, but what is the estimated timeframe to, from start to finish? Do you have anything yet, or?
What's the timeframe for the project?
Yeah.
Well, we'd like to think we can start construction, you know, within a year, but it's going to be somewhat out of our hands. It's a function of, as I said earlier, once you file your complete application this month, you really have to just kind of sit and wait and get in line with the other projects, because you have to collect both your historic tax credits and your federal and state housing credits. And that's basically, they get doled out on a project-by-project basis. Our hope, because we got kicked out of the, we didn't get through the program in the first two years, and then just got accepted, that we might move ourselves up in the pecking order. So it could be, you know, start in early '21, but it could be more like the end of '21. But it's really out of our control.
Right, okay.
We're ready to start as soon as we, the state provides us with the financing to do it.
We know it can be slow. That's why I was asking if you had an estimated timeframe of things. And, you know, and I don't want to bring this up, because you hate bringing something up that's like, oh, but you got to think about it. So what would happen if like you went under, or somebody else went under or something? What would happen to the project? I mean, because you're going to sub out the, you're going to bid out the contract.
Yeah, I mean, the building sat abandoned for a long time, and I've been able to afford to carry it. An extra year or two is not really going to make any difference. We will get the financing at some point. It will happen. So it's just a function of time, but it's not a question of if, it will happen. And our plan is, why I showed 25K Street, is once we get the approvals and the funding in place to move forward with 515, we'll start immediately in the application process for 25K Street. Because once we get through this first phase, this project, we'll have a much better chance and much faster movement through the next piece of the puzzle, so to speak. So our vision is that end of the property will end up being 150-unit residential development.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Council Steve?
Yeah, just one quick comment, and I certainly, I certainly hope that you do end up getting the funding that you need within the next year or two, but since the Wells project was, started going through the funding process back when I started on the council five and a half years ago, I hope you get it much faster than that.
I hope so.
Council Dan?
Yes, please. Through you to Mr. Norton. First off, I want to say thank you very much for bringing yourself to Southbridge and thinking outside the box a little bit in terms of that entire parcel. What was an area of despair is really beginning to look up now, and I'm very excited about it, as I know other councilors are. And I just want to thank you for that. On a question that I do have is, what impact, if any, will the river have on the project with it being right there? Is there any special care that you have to take in terms of the project, or is it okay where it is?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question. I couldn't hear it clearly.
Well, the, I'm wondering if the river itself or the canal that goes by the building has any special problems that you have to take care of in terms of the project that you've got in mind?
Well, the spillway is in disrepair, and that's planned to be improved as part of this project. I mean, if we're delayed a year or two, I don't anticipate that's going to be a major issue. We don't use the spillway all that much, and it still is serving its purpose, but that spillway will be rebuilt. I think we have a budget about half a million dollars in our overall budget to rebuild that as part of the 515K Street project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you. I'm sorry, they just keep popping up. He brings up the river, and I go back to the 1955 flood. So we all know, like, probably about 15 years ago, we did have some heavy rains here in Southbridge, and it was, it rained for like 11 days straight, and we had flooding issues in Southbridge, especially down what I used to know as South Village, it's Brookside Terrace, I think now, and down by the dam. So what precautions are taken down in that area? Because, I mean, it was a high flood-risk area at one time, so what are the precautions that are taken now?
Are you asking what's the flood risk in the property?
Yeah, and what are the precautions that are going to be taken?
Well, we're responsible for maintaining the dam by law, which we do. Gets inspected every five years, and a report gets done. I think we just completed our inspection. We work with the Army Corps of Engineers on water flow, water control upstream. I know FEMA is doing a new updated analysis, which includes a portion of our property. When we built the hotel conference center, we put in flood mitigation measures inside the park, pumps, drain system, whatever. I don't know if you noticed, but the large grass area, as you look at the hotel from the rotary to the right, that's a sunken area. That's basically a flood prevention area to catch the water in the event that there's a, there is a flood from the river that comes onto the property. The only other buildings that are in the floodplain are just a corner of this building and a corner of 25K Street, believe it or not. The basements are about a foot below the floodplain. So on 515K Street, what we're going to do is raise the ceiling height in the basement to do it, we're going to raise the floor a foot and basically move it out of the floodplain. And that's allowed by the Army Corps of Engineers, and it will allow us to put habitable units down there. So we've already been through that analysis with our engineers and have had discussions with the Corps. So, you know, we've had the property, I've had the property for 20-plus years, have never had any water issues, not to say there couldn't be, but I think with the controls that are upstream by the Corps and the mitigation measures we put on-site as we've developed, I think we're in pretty good shape from a water perspective.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take your computer before you, before we start Citizens Forum, we'll just give you a quick second. Citizens Forum, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the town council on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Madam Clerk?
Hi, Maddie Bonadias, 947 Dennison Drive. I just have a few announcements to make that's coming up. The last day to register to vote for the presidential primary is going to be this Wednesday, February 12th until 8:00 p.m. That's to register to vote or to change your party affiliation as well. Also absentee ballots are now available, and early voting is going to begin Monday, February 24th, and it will go through Friday, February 28th through normal business hours. And also, on another note, 2020 dog licenses are now available. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to address the town council on anything not on the agenda this evening? Last call, seeing none. Item nine, vote to waive electrical plumbing and gas as well as building permit fees estimated at $166,075 that would otherwise be attributed to the 515K Street project to exhibit the town's support of this affordable housing project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Council Steve?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I noticed that our agenda, our agenda in motion says waive electrical plumbing and gas, but our, and building permits, but the document that we got during, in our packet doesn't mention gas permits?
No, it doesn't.
Do we have a, do we have a estimate for those?
I believe, Andy? We do have Andy here, and we do have Will Canoy here to address any questions relative to building permit fees as well as the.
The gas, gas and plumbing are generally one permit in our department. It's a combined permit application. So I omitted the word gas, but the plumbing permit would cover the gas and permit on plumbing.
Thank you. Council McKee?
I remember when this project came up a couple of years ago, and I think it's a great, great project and a beautiful design he has, but I can't, I can't justify giving him a waiver on the permits because, for one thing, in the Sunday paper, there was a story about the Worcester Woo Sox, and it was a story about 21 corporate sponsors who were contributing between $100,000 and $200,000 to bring the Woo Sox to Worcester. Everybody knows that the Woo Sox are a Boston Red Sox farm team. And Chip Norton is one of the corporate sponsors, and they're contributing between $100,000 and $200,000 each every year. So when I, when I look at that and I wonder, why does he need, if he can afford to give the Woo Sox $100,000 between $100,000 and $200,000, why would he need $166,000 from Southbridge for this, for building fee waivers? I mean, if, if this is so he can pay the sponsorship, get Southbridge to pay for the sponsorship, then I, shouldn't we call this the Woo Sox waiver? So I'm, I just can't support it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In this state tax credit program, I call it state and federal tax credit program, one of the things that the state wants to see is a local contribution. As you know, the state's going to be investing millions of dollars through a tax credit program because they believe in affordable housing for residents. Here, as you saw, the rents are really, they call it affordable housing, but I look at it as workforce housing, people that eventually live in Southbridge and work in our factories or different companies around the town. The reason that Mr. Norton came forward is because the state has impressed very strongly that they want to see a local contribution for this project. They want to know that the town of Southbridge is committed to providing quality of housing for our lower-income residents, and they want to see that this is the kind of project we support, and if we support it, they'll support it. It's sort of a combined effort, state and local government, to get behind something that benefits the citizens of our community.
Do you have, you want to respond, Council?
Well, okay, I saw his presentation, Mr. Tom, Andrew, through the chairman, and yes, we can show support for the project, in-kind support. Be nice if we could fix the sidewalks and the roads down there, that would be in-kind support, so I'm not going to support a waiver of the fees, but that's my opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. McKee, for bringing that to my attention. I will respectfully disagree with you, though, with regards to Mr. Norton's company sponsoring the Woo Sox to come to Worcester. I think it's great for Worcester to get that. It's too bad Mr. Norton couldn't persuade them to come to Southbridge. That would even been better for us. It's all business, and I believe $166,000 plus a little bit of change in waiver of the fees and the amount of potential business and tax revenue we can bring to Southbridge outweighs that. So I will support this tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve?
Thank you. Actually, I wanted to say thanks for bringing that point of view, that point, too. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that either. But I think it's interesting that, you know, this is, I'm actually glad to see that he's not asking for a TIF for this. that he's not asking for a TIF for this project.
I can't hear you.
I would definitely. I'm sorry. I'm saying, I'm glad, I'm glad to see that he's not asking for a TIF for this project, but because I don't know, I don't know if I'd be able to support that for a long term, but I can see that the idea of doing, doing this for, for a year or two and having it paid back, as you pointed out, the numbers would pay back within about two or three years, which I think I can deal with. The only issue is, actually, the biggest issue I had is the one that I mentioned that I asked Chip about when he was standing up there, about the fact that, that the Worcester County area's median is 72 grand, but ours is around 50. And I would love, I would love to see how we can change, have the state change the way they calculate that median income because it really does tend to be a little unfair for communities like ours. But that's not something that Chip has anything to do with and I can understand that. I don't know if somebody else can.
Mr. Tom, Tom, you have a comment on that?
Just one more comment. I think the public needs to understand why the state and why the town of Southbridge would get behind this type of project. As most of us are aware, this is an old factory and the cost of rehabilitating this factory is beyond the private, a private company's willingness to invest because you can't get a return on your investment. In other words, the cost of rehabilitating is more than you could ever make money back. That's why the state gets involved in this specific type of project, is they know it's not just about a return on investment, but a benefit to the community. And if you think about, as I think Chip said in his presentation, I think we all recognize this piece of property is in a highly visible part of Southbridge. Right on 131, we all go by it, we all see it. People who might want to move to town or invest in town see it right up front. And if we don't move forward with a type of project like this where we have the state investment and the local investment, that factory could sit empty for many, many years to come and I don't think that's a, in any way, a good solution for the town of Southbridge. So, yes, there's a little bit of investment in this, but I think that return on that small investment, both from the state's part and our part, would be very, very good.
Counsel Mina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to say something that the town manager said. This project is going to, I mean, just because the median in Southbridge is $50,700, I mean, it's going to attract other people from Worcester County. Hopefully move to, can you hear me? Hopefully move to Southbridge and, you know, it just, it's an attraction and it's, I think it could possibly be a way to help build Southbridge up. So, let's invest a little bit in our town. I mean, if you don't invest in the town, you're not going to get a return, period. And then we're going to be wondering where everything is. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
I just wanted to say that I was just raising that point just because of the way the numbers work out. I'm not actually opposed to the project. I would like to say, I just wanted to see that, that, I would like to see this, projects like this be calculated in ways that are actually fairer to the community. But I do completely agree that this project, I mean, if you've looked at the building and you look at the photos from above, the building is falling apart. And at, at the very best, if, if this project works, it'll be great because if nothing is done down there, that building will end up falling into the river.
Counsel Mina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I just want, I just picked up on something that you said, Counsel Steves, and you wanted to, you want it to be fair to the community. Well, if you take the prices, the rent prices that Mr. Norton showed us and then you compare them to like places like in Worcester, I mean, Westboro, Marlborough, Milford, even Millbury, I mean, they're, they're, it's a good price and, you know, it's going to attract people into the community. And so, I mean, you want things to be fair for everyone. I just, that, that just struck me wrong and, you know, that, that's all I want to say on that. I could say more, but I won't. I'll get myself in trouble.
Mr. Smick, you wanted to be recognized?
Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. Before I get started, I'd like to say, it's been about 30 years since I've been on council and I've been very excited about anything that happens down the AO complex. Because whatever it is, is going to be, is going to be helpful to this town. Now, to get into the matter, I'm going to start off with a question. In the last two years, have there been any projects, anything in the town of Southbridge that the town of Southbridge had to exhibit support? Have we had anything like that in the town of Southbridge?
Yes, we had to exhibit support for the Wells project.
And what, what did the town exhibit?
The town's, according to our letter that we sent, that this council sent to the Department of Housing and Authority, which is on file with the town manager's office, which was submitted, was that while the town has limited means in terms of direct finances to contribute to the project, the town has agreed to significantly reduce the sales price of the property to help facilitate redevelopment in accordance with the proposed redevelopment plan. Additionally, the town will be completing a major infrastructure upgrade along Main Street in 2020 that will extend to the location of Wells Schools at the corner of Main and Marcy Streets. The improvement project will be of great benefit to the Wells School property. So, that was the local contribution.
And in that plan that we've been dangling on for five years, did we waive any construction fees? No.
No, because the in-kind contribution was the infrastructure cost of that area.
I was going to bring up yesterday, Sunday telegram, but Counsel McKee did. And I think it's a great thing for Worcester and its area. I think it's great for the Red Sox and this is not meant to be critical. But on the front page of that article, like Counsel McKee said, there was a picture of Mr. Norton. And the headlines was "The 21 Club Goes Deep." I think that was the word. It's a play on words for baseball, but for this story, it meant 21 investors dug deep in their pocket, which they did. And that also is good for Worcester and the area. But as I walked away from reading the article, there was one thing that became very clear to me, that Mr. Norton, who I do not know, has deep pockets. Now, out of fairness, there are projects that have gone on in the last couple of years. Right now, there's one at the credit union. Did we exhibit support for that project? No. Couple of years ago, Cumberland Farms, did we exhibit? Because just voting to support it isn't good enough anymore. We have to exhibit. Why, I get an idea, why don't you guys go out on the front steps of the town hall, camera guys, follow them. You guys dance a jig. Send that into the state. That's your exhibit. You know, I just don't think it's fair. Looking at the long-term needs of this town, look at the long list of capital expenses that are needed, not counting the fire station and my favorite, road pavement. Can't afford to do it, but we're going to waive $166,000 in fees or income to the town. I don't know why. And it's not fair. Those of you counselors that are in favor of waiving that, I just hope you think again about it. I don't think it's right and I'm supportive of the plan at AO. But I just don't think it's fair and it's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smick. I'll just respond. I've done my research on the low housing tax credit through mass.gov and you're right. Hey, it is a very difficult discussion to have about whether we're going to support a local project. That perhaps the individual does have deep pockets. I do know that that Franklin Realty has invested this past year in Harvest Fest and contributed thousands of dollars to the town of Southbridge in support of that. Perhaps in the future, there'll be other support. In the website for the low-income housing tax credit, it's listed right on the selection criteria, degree of local support, including local funding commitments. It's part of the application process for the local housing commitment. Cumberland Farms, a big, huge corporate building, wasn't asking for low-income housing tax credits. The Southbridge Credit Union is not a low-income housing tax credit organization. I'm disappointed that the Southbridge Credit Union is actually building a new building and taking, and we're going to lose and probably tear down a nice historic building that's there. There's been counselors on this dais that have said, how could we work with our local partners in order to save buildings and not have them fall down and torn down and how could we have cooperative partnerships with them? So, I looked at this and said, option one, the building sits there. The, Will Canoya, our assessor, did a great analysis of what we, and that was part of the question that we had when we met, Counsel Adams and I talked to him and we said, hey, we don't have money to give, but let's talk about what we get for taxes now on that property and the assessment on that property. And if we invest whatever we can to have a local partnership with them, how much would that improve the, that, that property, to put it on the tax rolls? And the analysis was $52,000 more per year to the tax rate. So, the building, so, so we have a building that's fallen down, that is crumbling at that end of town, that could just sit there? Or do we work with the developer under a low-income program, rehab the building, get assessed more and more tax rolls as well as those residents that live there are now will pay more excise taxes, will contribute to the local economy? So, yes, it is a tough decision to make, but I am supportive of it because of those reasons. I don't want a building to fall down. It's a historic building. There's not much he can do with it based on the historic component of that. Let's just keep it there and fall down or work with him and get it back on the tax rolls.
Counsel Mina?
Thank you, Counsel Jovian. Through you. Well said, by the way, with working with a partner in the community. I'm just going to say this. Over the last couple of years, we've, we haven't really brought much business into Southbridge. We managed to drive three to four million dollars a year of business out of Southbridge. This is a $166,500 investment that the town of Southbridge is going to be making that could potentially bring us in millions of dollars in years to come. I am in full support of this and not driving business out of town. That's all. Thank you.
Counsel Ozon?
I wasn't going to comment on it. I was just going to vote. I promised Counsel Jovian we'd try and get through 44 agenda items, but I can't help but just give my opinion. It's only an opinion. Don't take it personal. I'm not a fan of low-income housing. We've got enough low-income housing in our town already. Usually there's a balance between low-income mod and upper income. Well, we're in an imbalance where the low income is getting heavier and heavier and heavier. Let's show the state goodwill after what they did to my school system. I don't care about the state. I care about the Southbridge taxpayers. When you talk about Cumberland Farms and credit union and, and the dispensaries, you're talking about business. Zero impact to services like schools. Let's talk about low income. Great impact on our schools and services. When you turn around and say, we're going to get $52,000 in taxable income on this building. And then you turn around on the other side of the coin and you say, what is it going to cost the town of Southbridge on the services side? We'll blow that $52,000 up like it was a nickel. I sit back and I keep saying, show the state, show the state. I don't see it. We're going to waive $166,000 in fees. I don't remember ever doing this for anybody. Maybe it is a good idea. But when I drive down the road to Southbridge, take your $166,000 and grind up a couple of streets and pave it for the taxpayers of the town. Not for the ones who get in their vehicles and drive out of town at 5:00. For the people that live here. That's why I'm up here. I'm not up here for low-income housing, can't stand it, won't support it, never will. Wells should never be a housing project with the parking limitations, traffic. The one thing Florence Chandler told me, get that school off Main Street. It congests the whole Main Street area. We did. Now, we're not congested, but now we're going to put housing. What do you want to be when you grow up, Southbridge? Low-income housing or business? We have a million-dollar economic development department. Why can't we get business to come to Southbridge? If you can't get a business in that, that business district, Chip Norton is one of the better businessmen that I've met in my, in my time. If you cannot get a business to come in your mill, then what's the next best income? Low-income housing. Because the majority of the people that are going to be in there are going to be subsidized anyways. So, he's a good businessman. Now, why can't these counselors act like businessmen and look at the $166,000 and I'm going to hear the manager tell me about these capital improvement projects? Buildings are falling down and, different things we need to do, but we're going to give a multimillion-dollar conglomerate $166,000. It's like the poor man giving the rich man $166,000. We got our tax bills. We, we got them. We digest them. Now, we have to deal with this. I'm a counselor that continuously believes the buck stops here. I'm voting no on the project. I'm voting no on waiving the fees and I'm going to continue to worry about the people that live in Southbridge, the taxpayers. Thank you.
Counsel McKee?
I would just like to respond to this notion that it's going to bring in, how much it's going to be worth and it's going to be bringing in $52,000 more a year. Is that 100% accurate, 100% guarantee that that's how much it's going to bring in? Or is that maybe it might be 50/50?
I'll let the assessor respond.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. So, let me just give you a little bit of history about that property. As Chip said, there are, they, they own three major properties in Southbridge. The first of which is the Hotel Conference Center, which is its own parcel upon itself and that's assessed at approximately $31 million, which means it brings in about $620,000 in property tax, in additional in personal property tax, which I won't get into. They own another property, which I believe has the, the college and the Department of Labor in there. That's a million something, another, another $20,000 in taxes. And then you have the, this parcel here, which is parcel 37-5. There's about 50 acres on it and 14 older industrial buildings, which Chip did a great job of explaining. So, the parcel, the, what is it, 15 K Street parcel here, that parcel currently is assessed at 430, I'm sorry, $439,000, which is the building and the supporting land underneath it. That 439,000, about 200 and something thousand of it, of it is the building. So, that building is in a very, very poor state. If that building was in a good state, it would be assessed at close to $3 million, but because of its condition, the building is assessed at, as I said, 200 and something thousand dollars, which means it brings in that building about $8,000 a year in property tax. That building left untouched will only get worse and that assessed value will only go down. So, what I did with the analysis here is based on the construction, all of the rentals for the, for, you know, all the rental information that I was given, which I assume is accurate. If that build, if there was no building there now and they built a full building on it, that building would be worth about $3,150,000, which would be about $62,000, $63,000 in property tax. Because there is already that distressed building and the land upon it, that currently has about 8,000, it bears about $8,000 in property tax. So, that's why I say the increase will be the $52,810 a year in property tax. That could be a little bit more. It could be a little bit less. Very, very comfortable that it will be in this amount, but that's only based on the information I was given information I was given and the rentals that Chip showed up there. So I'm very confident in the, that the additional taxes will be at least the $52,000, $52,800. It could be more, but.
Thank you. You have a follow-up question, council?
Thank you. Through you, to Will Canoia. The question I had was, are you sure that it's gonna be 100% this total amount?
Well, I'm as sure as if the building gets built the way it was presented and the rentals are what was presented, yes. If the rentals turned out to be more, the value would be more, so.
But it could be less.
I don't think so, not unless the rentals were less and.
But you're not 100% sure, that's all I'm asking. I mean, that's all I'm asking. Are you 100% sure?
I'm as sure as an appraiser could be with the information provided, yes.
He's not answering the question.
He said as sure as that he can be.
Thank you.
You have any follow-up questions?
Well, I mean, if it's, I'm going to, I'm gonna say it's probably 50/50. Could be 50% less than what he's saying, and in that case, it'd probably take about six years to pay this off, not three years. And in that case, it's a lose, that's a money loser for the town. Thank you.
Will?
Through the chairman. The only way it would be 50% less is if they built 50% of the project they're presenting. So I'm as sure as anybody reasonably could be. If they build it that way, that will be the end result. If they build less, then it would be less.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Mina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I do have a question for Mr. Norton. If you could come back up, I just have a question. Thank you, Mr. Norton. So my question to you would be through the, the chair. How long do the units need to stay in, with the federal and the state credits in low-income status? How long, how long would that be?
I believe 20 years, but I, I'm gonna have to double-check that for you. Some long period of time. Has to be maintained in the same state that it was developed for.
So in 20, after 20 years, it doesn't have to, so.
I can double-check that for you. I'm going, I'm, I'm estimating that's what it is, but I can get the facts for you and certainly respond tomorrow.
And if it didn't stay in low-income status for that, that length of time, you would be penalized, I'm sure. You'd have to pay the money back.
Yeah, everybody, the tax credit investors are penalized as well as the developer.
Right, okay.
You have an, you have an operating agreement as the sponsor developer that you're, you have to maintain, and you're basically, I'm personally guaranteed on that, so.
Okay. So eventually, it can come out of low-income status, or make an investment in the town, and yeah, people need a place to live, they need a decent place to live, and I, I get what some of my fellow councilors are saying up here, but I think it's a great opportunity for Southbridge, so I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Can I just respond to one issue that came up when the assessor was up here? The rents are set by the state, so there's no deviation. The rents are the rents. So the rents are gonna go down, the rents aren't gonna change, they're set, and they go up annually based on some sort of CPI, so they're not subject to negotiation.
Thank you. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm not gonna try to stand up here for a long time and, and talk about this, but, 'cause I think I have an idea of who's voting for what, at least from a couple. Quick question. Is this part of the opportunity zone in this area? No, not in this area? Okay, thank you. I know we have two within the town of Southbridge itself, right? So first of all, I wanna thank Mr. Norton for coming up here, giving the presentation. I appreciate the chair allowing me to push this forward to the town, to the council itself instead of doing a P and V subcommittee meeting. One thing that I will say is that this project doesn't get done, that building just sits there, and it falls within itself, and it just decays and becomes blight, another piece of blighted property. Also, the fact is, this waiving of these, these permit fees is over probably, what, two, three-year period? Not one year, right?
Will? Andy, I'm sorry. This is over a few-year period, the $166,000?
These permit fees would be in the year that they apply for the permit. So even if the job is a three-year job, it's the year they apply for the permit, we collect the permit fee.
Okay, great, thank you. Also, you know, one thing I heard about from a lot of people, 'cause I did post this up on social media, and I did get a few phone calls and a little post here and there, and one thing they're complaining about, a lot of people within this town, because it is a low-income town, if you wanna say that, they, they were complaining about the rental prices within the town. Some of them were paying 12, 15, almost $2,000 a month for delivering one of the triple-deckers. So this being said, as far as that, this is a no-brainer to me. Also, the fact is, we're working with a local business within our town to better our town and to, to figure a few things out, especially when we're going from Wells Street, working on that, working on the road all the way through Main Street, going down to the Rotary because there's plans for that, Riverfront, that Mr. Norton has talked about in the past, and now to 5 through 15 K Street, or K Street. So I support this, I highly support this, and I appreciate your time for even the opinions of those that are not in the same opinion as mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See, none. Roll call?
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lozo?
No.
Council Mina?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
No.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10, vote to approve sending a letter of support for the 515 K Street project to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion on that letter? See, none. Roll call?
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lozo?
No.
Council Mina?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
No.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chip. We'll get that letter signed and over to your office, okay? Thank you. Item 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Gunner Borkland to serve on the Cable TV Advisory Board effective immediately through June 30, 2021, to fill a vacancy due to a member resignation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. It's the town manager.
Okay. I just wanna say this, this came up at the last GenGov meeting, and we voted unanimously to support it.
Didn't understand a word you said, but I heard that we unanimously support. I'll just leave it at that. Any further discussion? All set. All those in favor? Opposed? Council Lozo, you're in favor?
In favor.
Yep. Motion carries. Vote to accept the warrant for the presidential primary on Tuesday, March 3, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? See, none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimously, so our president. Item 13, vote to accept a donation of five solar-powered flagpole lights valued at $875, donated by the Southbridge Veterans Council to be installed at the Warlord I Honor Roll Gold Star Mothers, Vietnam Veterans, and Italian-Americans Veterans Monuments. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Council Adams, did you wanna address the council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, councilors, town manager. Actually, I'm gonna grab that letter real quick. So a few months back, we, we had a Veterans Council meeting, and Mr. James Attili had been bringing it up for the last few years about lighting within our monuments. And it took until October this past year to actually have a great conversation about it and to make a motion to donate funds to the town itself through the trustees, Morals Board, to purchase some lights, simple lights that will go up on five of our monuments or our flagpoles within the town that currently don't have lights. We noticed was, on the Rotary, those three monuments that are there, the Vietnam, the Vietnam, the Gold Star Mothers, and the Italian-American monuments didn't have any lights or didn't have any flags flying at all. So what we decided to do was put those on those three. The Honor Roll has a light, but you could barely see the flag, and the other one is at the Warlord I monument right across the street, which you can't, we can't fly a flag up there. So the trustees board has been working, we've been working closely with them as the Veterans Council, and also the DPW, which I wanna thank you for your time and effort with that, trying to figure these things out. And we came up with, we voted up to $3,000 to donate to the town itself for solar lights and some other, some other items that we may need in the, the near future. But, so we started off with these solar-powered lights right here. They're 240 lumens, and we talked to Mark, and I know we talked to Heather, and we kinda worked this thing out, but we had to obviously come up here to ask for you to accept these lights. We've already purchased them, all right? So either, either they're gonna go on our flagpoles within the town, or they'll either be sent back, or they'll go on some lights to some veterans around town. So we'll see how it goes this evening. I do wanna read this letter off, that I wrote to the town council members back in February, or February 3, 2020. "In October 2019, during our monthly meeting, the Southbridge Veterans Council discussed the absence of American flags being flown over town-owned Veterans Monuments. One of the reasons for this was the flags could not be flown at night because of improper lighting or lack thereof. That evening, the Southbridge Veterans Council voted unanimously to set aside funds in order to purchase solar-powered flagpole lights for these monuments. The intent is to honor those veterans and those organizations within our town, our own town, and who donated and sacrificed so much. Over the past few months, we have discussed and worked closely with our town's DPW," and I should've put in there the trustees board as well, "on what lights would properly illuminate and fit on five flagpoles." So to finish it up, those are the five flagpoles we talked about. "We request that the town council vote to accept the donation of these lights, and if accepted, we will work closely with the town manager, the DPW, and the trustees, soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen memorials board, in order to properly display our nation's colors." Thank you.
And just for the record, that's signed David Adams, President of Southbridge Veterans Council and not as a Southbridge Town Council, just for the record. Any discussion? Any comments? Like to thank the council for doing that for the town and getting those flags displayed and maintaining the properties and all the hard work that you're undergoing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Council Adams will abstain. Motion carries. Item 14, vote to authorize town manager to use attorney William August to assist in cable contract negotiations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Councilor Steves?
Yeah, one quick question. I know, I saw that you did send us the old contract. Thank you very much. Did you get a cost for the, what it actually cost last time we did negotiations? I remember we asked that at the meeting.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. We did find the records of it. I didn't have it with me, but it was approximately $13,000 to $14,000.
Okay. I meant just to say, the GenGov did approve this unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Manager?
Yeah, just one comment, and again, I wanna say to the citizens that are watching this council meeting tonight, and I've said to councils a number of times, we're gonna be starting soon a negotiation of a new long-term contract with our cable company. The reason for tonight's motion is that, I'm gonna read just a brief thing from his bio. "Bill August is a partner at Epstein and August LLP, a law firm concentrating in the representation of municipalities in cable television and related telecommunications matters. Bill August represents municipalities in cable franchise renewal and cable regulatory matters, and is recognized leader in municipal cable television law." And it goes on, but this is a real specialty. I'm looking forward to an opportunity to talk to him. I've heard from numerous people that they might wanna change cable companies. I'll note that that is difficult because the infrastructure is already in place, but I promise each of you that I will bring that up for discussion with the attorney to see if there's any possibility in that and what, in, in what we can do if there is a possibility, 'cause I'm, to be honest with you, when I did this in the past in Hanson, Massachusetts, I found that because the infrastructures are in place, it's almost impossible to do. But I don't know for sure yet, but I want you to know that we'll be investigating that issue very closely. Again, if citizens have any comments about this, please email me at rsonangelo@southbridgemass.org. I'd love to hear your comments on this, and again, councilors, any comments you have, please bring them forward. We did send a recent contract to all the councilors if they had any questions, so they could review the contract. Our cable director is gonna be involved in those negotiations, and I've briefly read the contract. I've gotta read it again thoroughly after this passes, and we'll start moving this forward as quick as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council Mina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the town manager. Thank you for looking into that to getting possibly another, but even just to open it up and make it more competitive. I mean, Charter, Verizon, you know, just to make it more competitive, and it might help with the rates, too. You never know. So thank you for looking into that.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Council Marketti?
Through you to the town manager. I was just wondering what the reason for this letter? License transfer application of Charter and Comcast.
Actually, Mr. Marketti, it asked about this previously in meeting, and I'm, I'm a little puzzled, 'cause I don't remember seeing it, so I gotta see.
That's all right. He can, he can get back to me.
If it's okay, I'll respond to you tomorrow directly on this.
That's fine. Thank you.
I'm not sure we got it. It's obviously, it's an old letter from 2014.
But you sent it to me.
With them and term town manager Kevin Pico. So I'll read and review this and get an answer for you tomorrow, Mr. Marketti. Council Marketti.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimously, so our president. Item 15, vote to approve the transfer of $300 from town council reserve account number 001132.78100 to other charges and expenses licensing board account number 01178.57000 to cover public hearing notices for liquor license violations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Councilor Steves?
This was also at our last GenGov meeting, and this is simply going because of the fact that they have, as Claire states, that they have a whole bunch of hearing notices, and there's a couple of key, big cases that are going on right now in front of the liquor board. So they've kind of overrun their, their amount for advertising them, and we approved it unanimously.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
Council Lozo abstains. Item 16, vote to accept the Mass DOT grant in the amount of $70,607.46 to purchase a propane mower and attachments for the Southbridge Municipal Airport according to the grant justification attached. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Councilor Steves?
Yeah, we approved that at GenGov unanimously, too.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Marketti?
I took a tour of the airport a couple of months ago, and they look like they had a lot of lawn mowers, and I was just wondering why, I, I don't wanna turn down a grant, believe me. I was just wondering why they needed another lawnmower. I don't wanna turn down the grant, I'm just asking, that's all.
Council Lozo?
They have a lot of lawn mowers 'cause they have a lot of grass to cut.
That's true. They were, these are very large lawn mowers. Looked like they handled the job.
Yeah. And Councilor Steves?
Yeah. When, actually, I think Ron Cluff is here. He could specifically answer, but when we talked about it at GenGov, he was, it was commenting about the issues that this, this is specifically more for, for going after fence fines and stuff like that have grown back over the last couple of years, and we are, or it was not the previous thing, and then this is, this is a, this is being state, this is a state grant, so it's not, we're not actually, we don't have to make, actually pay any money toward this one. I think the last one we did.
We did, yes. Ron?
First of all, we have 167 acres to cut. That's a lot of grass. This all came about not for cutting grass. This was to clear fences of all those vines all the way around the perimeter. We have nothing to do that project with. We have nothing to do that project with. Last August, I believe it was, I called them and asked if they could give us some kind of assistance. And at the October meeting, we have a meeting every October with the aeronautics division. And once the meeting was over, the finance director came to me and he said, Ron, he says, you interested in this Ventrac meeting, machine? Has a nine-foot boom. You can cut all your fences, both sides. I said, well, Mike, here's the deal. I don't have any money. If you're telling me I can have it for 100%, I'm on. If you tell me I have to pay, I'm not interested. A few weeks ago, I got the grant. 100%.
Very good.
It has about 12 different attachments that you can put on it. We have a banking on the south end. That's probably be a 30, 35-degree angle to cut that grass. We don't have anything we can do that with. We can do it with this machine. It has eight wheels. Very stable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Kudos to you and the Airport Commission for the grants that we're getting, and this and the next grant that we're going to talk about. We're very fortunate, and I think I expressed that before. I believe we have one of the best airports in the state for a small town. It's well-maintained, so anything we can get. And I know you're always out there pounding for as much money as you can, so thank you for all the work that you and the Airport Commission have, has done for the airport.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Counsel Lazo? Just on top of what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, fine job up at the airport, always getting the grant money. I really think you should run for council. We need more conservatives up here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
No campaigning.
All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Item 17, if you'll indulge, there'll be an amendment attached to this. So I'll read the first part of the motion. Vote to appropriate $76,000 as a grant match for the fuel farm replacement at the Southbridge Municipal Airport account number 84290. $55,000 is approved by town council on February 4th, 2019 for this project, with the $21,000 difference to be transferred from the following: $19,000 from FY 2014 Capital Voting Machines account number 63450, and $2,000 from Police Bulletproof Vest capital account number 64450. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Now, the amendment, counsel?
And the amendment is to authorize the town manager to accept and execute the MassDOT grant offer and standard contract upon issuance, and two, to execute the notice of award for Dependable Petroleum Service Incorporated, and three, to execute the construction contract with Dependable Service Company Incorporated for the full bid amount of $562,600, and then execute notice to proceed for Dependable Service Company Incorporated contingent upon the town receiving MassDOT construction grants for previously requested amount of $569,520.
Is there a motion? Second, on the amendment?
I'll second.
Okay. The reason for the amendment is that that should have been included in this.
It should have been in the item.
It was discussed fully at, so the match of $76,000 is part of the grant that we're authorizing.
Right.
So it's just to add on to that. Mr. Manager?
If I could, I just, I want to make sure I'm clear, and I know that the chairman of the airport commission is here. This was the bided amount for the work. That's what the full, the reason the full dollar was in there, that that work was already bid out when we thought last year this project was going to go forward. Last year, it was put out the bid, and then as a result of the federal government not moving forward to funding, that bid still exists as current. We can use that bid, and that's what was just, give me the authorization to approve the, what was the accepted bid for that project, just to make sure that that's clear. Is that clear?
Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Okay. Now, discussion. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Counselor Steves?
For the public, I just want to clarify that we set aside $55,000 for this to match, to be a part, partial match to this grant, like last year or something. And then they came back and said that we needed to give a little bit more to it. And in this case, it's actually not coming from any taxpayer funds. It's going, coming from funds that have been sitting around for a couple of years now, so it doesn't actually add to the cost, which is good for us.
And the original project last year, just for clarification, was there was a federal portion, and the federal government did not fund it.
Yep.
So again, the airport commission, working with our state partners, and the importance of what our Southbridge Municipal Airport is to the overall state transportation network of airports, felt it was necessary that we get this fuel farm, and we do have to replace it one way or another. So that fuel farm has to be replaced. Counselor Steves?
And also, GenGov approved it unanimously. And just to clarify here a little bit also, is that John Henry, who isn't here, I didn't see if you have any questions, he mentioned that he thought it could be done on time. That the way the grant works is that we need to get this done by the end of this fiscal year. He thought it could be done in 10, 11, 16 weeks lead time to order the tanks. Some of the like ancillary stuff can fall after June 30th. And that's, there was a schedule, there's a schedule in the packet if you want to see what that actually looks like, to remove the old tank, for example. So it's, and the deadline is, but to order the tank and actually get it in is June 30th.
Correct. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to note since we, or the fiscal year for the $19,000 from the Capital Voting Machines account, the $2,000, which is the Police Bulletproof Vest capital account, came from fiscal year 16.
Correct.
That's all it is.
16. 16. Any further discussion? Given the dollar amount, roll call.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And you can work with the town manager, have it signed and get to your office, okay? Thank you. Item 18, vote to ratify the amendment to this community development block grant FY 2019 contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development to increase the code enforcement service area to include the new target area of Crane, Maine. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. On the 30 January meeting that we had planning development, it was voted 5-0 in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
I agree with doing this. I just have a quick question that I probably should have asked at the subcommittee, is that if we're doing this to increase the code enforcement area, will this actually effectively increase the entire CDBG area, CDBG area in town, so that for future, for future grant rounds, we would be able to apply for CDBG funds in that area as well?
I'm having a hard time.
I should have, I don't know if you can answer that.
Yeah.
It just occurred to me now.
They want to be repeated. We had a hard time hearing it, too.
The question was, if we approve this to have the new target area, does that increase the area for future funding for the community development block grant areas? Is that the question?
Well, basically, because it's specifically since we're doing it to increase the code enforcement service area.
This is specific to the fiscal year 19 grant, because you've already applied within the certain service area. So now you're expanding within that grant.
Okay.
For future grant years, fiscal year 20, we are writing into the grant to be able to do the code enforcement in the Crane, Maine.
Would we be able, what would the process be for actually expanding the general CDBG use to that area?
We can.
So we can do the other stuff as well?
We can. By design, when we write an activity, we can say, you know, we're basing it on this low to moderate income census block, as long as we can tie the data back, which I think we talked about a lot in the subcommittee.
Right. Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Item 19, vote to approve the grant components for the fiscal year 2020 community development grant application for a total grant award of $825,000, and authorize the town manager to apply for this grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moves.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. I just want to comment that there's numerous, a number of public hearings on this issue. I want to thank the economic development department for their aggressive attempts to get the public involved in this, to let them hear this. I know that a number of town counselors attended these meetings, but it was really a great effort. We had a number of citizens that showed up. I wish frankly, there were more, but we wanted to let the public know how these funds are being used and what the benefits of utilizing these funds would be to our community. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I know that our CDBG coordinator looks like she'd like to make a comment as well.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just wanted, that same evening, January 30th, the PND meeting, it was voted in favor 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Peg, did you have anything you wanted to add?
May I make a few comments to the council? I just want to thank you, first of all, for having six of the nine town counselors at the last subcommittee meeting. That was excellent turnout. I want to correct, when we were in the subcommittee, I was talking about the public comments. I had reversed the September 26th meeting. There were three counselors in attendance. The October 24th meeting was excellent attendance. And then we had our most recent public hearing on January 9th. You can find links to all of those meetings and public hearings on the Cable Access YouTube channel. I recommend if anyone has questions about the projects in the fiscal '21, which will be the next round of grants, please come to the department in the summer, fall, to be able to have those comments incorporated into the decision-making process. And I also wanted to address a specific question about the census block next to the new Crane to Maine. It's 72.17%. So in the future, you could potentially consider that as an expanded target area to try to reach the highest number of low to moderate income residents.
Counselor McCarty?
I supported this at the subcommittee, and I think it's great that we're spending this money on fixing up a road. It's a good, good plan. I just want to make, make it clear that I just want to see better oversight of these projects because of what happened with the Central Street project. I want to see better oversight. Personally, I think we need a clerk of the works, because, you know, we spent over $100,000 for an engineering company to oversee the parking lot, and it didn't work out too well. So a clerk of the works, in my opinion, would be a better, better plan going forward. I mean, I support this, just want to see better oversight. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Hi. Just for, just for the public's interest here, I just wanted to quickly summarize what we're actually doing with the money. $60,000 is going to housing and code enforcement, which is a part-time code enforcement officer, and for the health department and the inspections department. Infrastructure, which is primarily rebuilding West Street, which is $540,000 of CDBG money, and some Chapter 90 money is going to that project, and it's not entirely in the CDBG zone. Public facilities, parks and playgrounds, $80,000 for that, which is primarily over at Henry Street Field, fencing for the back, fencing at the back field, new backstop netting on the front field, shade structures and/or a dugout, a new school board, a new scoreboard with electrical connections, and the labor and installation for those things. And the delivery and administration of $145,000, which is something that the CDBG grants allow us to use to, to make sure that the people in our town hall who are doing this work get paid for it.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to thank the team downstairs for, for being so transparent with this fiscal year CDBG funds. It's, it's very interesting that there was three, three meetings when there really needed just to be a public hearing, you ended up having a public meeting to talk about it, that counselors got involved to find out what was actually being worked on, along with some residents within the town itself. And, you know, I look forward to what's in, what's in store for the following fiscal year application process. But I do know that this application has to go through by, I think, March 6th to the state. And again, I want to thank Peg, and Rosemary, and Eric, and DPW for all the hard work, especially on this road project, or the majority of it will go to a road project. So looking forward to seeing that transpire in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay. Thank you, Peg, for the presentation, all the work that you did on that and working with us. I do believe our comments have been made about our oversight. This will be a project, because it is roads, would be managed by the Department of Public Works through the bidding processes and the capable hands of that DPW. So I'm sure that'll meet all criterias for that. Also, look forward to working, Counsel Adams has pushed forward to complete streets, target area two, and perhaps we can combine some grant monies for West Street, work through that program as well. That'll be in two fiscal years that we will accomplish fixing Main Street area and West Street, so two of the, two streets that are in need of repair and traffic lights and everything, target areas. And we'll be working as council to see if we can do some of the side streets as well. But exciting time for projects up and down the Main Street corridor. Regardless of how you feel about how the projects go, what Counsel Adams said earlier, really, when you come through the whole town, starting at Wells, all the way down to, say, the AO complex with the riverfront, that's a whole redevelopment of a whole downtown area, which is exciting stuff, I think, for the town. See some rehab, rehabilitation and growth for the town. It's all good things to help hopefully enhance other individuals to invest in the town of Southbridge. Peg?
May I make a final comment?
Yes.
The comment about the MassDOT funds or Chapter 90 funds will be, we are paying 45% of the project through the CDBG funds, and then the rest will go through DPW or through Chapter 90 funds. And with regards to the total, $825,000, that's your standard annual mini entitlement grant, barring no changes. In the last two decades, between 2008 and 2008, or 2006 and 2018, just to give you some statistics, you have spent more than 50% of your money on infrastructure projects alone. That's upwards of $5.75 million through the CDBG funds to be able to do roads, sidewalks, infrastructure.
Thank you, Peg. Counsel Adams?
Just last comment, this project, I believe, is what Heather said, was about $1.2, $1.3 million in the end. That's without the sewer and water lines, right? So that'll come out of different funds. So I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 20, vote to approve the transfer of funds totaling $46,100 from Sewer Chemicals account number 600440-580100 at $20,000. Sewer compost amendment 600440-550400 at $20,000. And sewer testing and evaluation 600440-530700 at $6,100 to the sewer operations account 600440-543100 to cover this year's operations contract with Viola. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Adams?
Mr. Chair, just through you, since I took the minutes for that, it was voted 3-0 in favor of.
Yep. And this was because of costs that were associated outside of the contract last is now within the contract. And if there's any further questions on that, have this here to answer it. If anybody have any questions. Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Item 21, vote to transfer the funds totaling $273.98 from town council reserve, 001132.4587000
zero zero one one three two dot four, five eight seven zero zero zero, to Town prior year unpaid bill account, zero zero three one three five dot five eight nine nine zero zero dot nine zero nine five, to cover two outstanding invoices from a 2015 total related charges. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just on the town manager's signature at the date, it looks like you put in nineteen instead of twenty, so you might want to change that. That's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Since I took the minutes for that meeting, it was three zero in favor of.
Thank you. There was some discussion on this. I was chairing that meeting. These bills are, were verified that they were bills for the town of Southbridge, that they are owed by the town of Southbridge. The vendor, Sturbridge Service Center, is cleaning up their books because they had closed up their business. So noting that, due diligence was done by our finance department and our department head to make sure that this was outstanding. It is an obligation that we have as a town and should be paid. Counselor Adams?
Chair, I misspoke. That was the original motion to postpone that. It was four zero once we revisited that agenda item.
Correct. Counselor Lazo?
This happened in 2015?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mr. Lazo. I didn't make it to this meeting, but you bring up 2015. Is there like a, I don't know?
We had a discussion about that, so I'll let Heather.
I'll make a comment, so.
Why? Five years.
As a, as what was brought up by Chairman Jovan, it, we just received these bills. Sturbridge Service Center is now defunct and has been purchased. They're going through their old books. They're having somebody audit, an actual accountant audit their books, and they found these and they said to us, "We don't think we ever sent you a bill," or "There was never a bill sent, so you wouldn't have had a bill to pay." And that is where we went back and did the due diligence to make sure that the VIN numbers matched, and they did. They were vehicles that we owned. We never received a bill. We wouldn't have known to pay it. Can't pay a bill you don't have, so.
So, and I get it, but it's a defunct business. They never sent us a bill. I mean, I don't think that we should be obligated to pay it.
I don't believe they're a defunct business. They've gone, they're no longer servicing, but I don't think, I think their corporation is still active.
They're trying to collect some of their past due invoices at this time.
Isn't that like, like you grandfathered in somewhere? Okay.
Counselor Adams?
I'm trying.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to answer Counselor Manah's, because those same questions came up, and that's why it was originally postponed to another, to another meeting. But after clarification of the law itself, and this is the notes that I took, law that the bills can and should be paid. After, we had a long discussion, checked laws out, and then after, but the original question was, "Are we even obligated to pay this at this time?" Or even, is it against the law for us to pay it legally? And after further research, it was found that we were, we should, and we were obligated to pay it.
We can and we should, or are we obligated?
I think that's the question. We can.
And I'd have to look at my notes again. Counselor Manah?
Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, I always want to actually raise the question initially, and I guess we did a little homework on it. And that's good, definitely, that's definitely A-plus of having iPhones available. You can look up stuff like that. But I don't have one. But anyway, so, but what we came up with is that we can, if we choose to do this, we have to vote three, a two-thirds majority to do so. And so it's kind of, it's kind of up to us at this point, because it's, it is one of those things where we never did get a bill. So it is, it is service that we did get from this company, but since they didn't bill us technically, we probably aren't on the hook to pay it. We probably should.
Yep. I know Karen has an answer for the two-thirds, because that is not true.
Okay.
Based on, we had, go ahead, Karen, you explained it to me, but go ahead.
Yep, the two-thirds vote is not required. It's only required if the bill is legally unenforceable because we didn't have funds at the time. We did have funds at the time. The issue was, we just never received the bills. So a majority vote would be fine.
So what does the law say about never receiving a bill five years, five years earlier?
I mean, we did receive the service. We are obligated to pay.
Yeah, and I could totally understand that. I was just wondering what the law said, because that was the question we were raising at the subcommittee meeting.
As far as I know, there's no timetable.
Okay.
Counselor Lazo?
The Finance Director, we should pay this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lazo. And I know, I do know Heather verified that the VIN numbers were, VIN numbers, they say exactly where they were towed from and reason for the tow, so, yep. Okay. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 22, vote to approve the reappropriation of funds totaling ten thousand dollars originally appropriated for the DPW HVAC study, project number six four six zero, approved at the June nineteenth, 2017 Town Council meeting. Agenda item number fifty-six to now be appropriated for DPW HVAC study, design, and repairs project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I took those notes as well, so don't fault me for it. It was voted favorably four zero.
And Heather, do you want to just explain to the other council and the public why we're changing that, real quick or brief?
So originally, back when we did the facilities management study, it was recommended that we take a look at some of the heating systems, especially the old ones in the main garage, and see if there was something more efficient that can be done. As you're aware, at the same time, we were doing energy efficiency grant and energy audits studies. So we actually had people coming in that were looking at this equipment already. What they told me is if, although it is a very big, old, and not as efficient, because it is an oil burner for this, for our garage heater, which was this specific unit we were supposed to look at, unless we were going to get something like gas, which we could do radiant heat with, we wouldn't be able to get anything, really, that was more efficient. I've had other contractors look at, look into it also, like our regular heating people that come and do our cleanings, and they kind of confirm the same thing. So instead of going out and spending more money on a study to be done to get the same answer, I don't think it's worth it. Kind of already done the study phase. We have other heating issues in the building, which they identified. Our, one of our transfer pumps weren't working. We have multiple other issues that we need to address, heating system-wise. I'd like to be able to use that money to address some of those issues.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 23, vote to approve the purchase of a Ford, 2020 F-450 utility body truck for the Sewer Department, as approved in the FY 2020 Sewer Budget Equipment Capital Account, number six zero zero four four zero dash five eight three zero 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 dash two zero five eight one, for sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars to replace by trade-in the existing Ford, 2006 Ford F-450, known as unit number sixty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Counsel, Counsel Adams first on the recommendation.
Just throw the notes out there. It was voted two to two. I believe that's a negative recommendation at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did not support this in subcommittee. I don't believe it's fiscally responsible for a 2006 vehicle with such low mileage, sixty-seven thousand miles, because it has a little bit of rust. It has a diesel engine. We did have a citizen member at the subcommittee that mentioned if it was maintained properly, we could get two hundred thousand miles out of this vehicle. So I believe the money could be put to better use. There are many catch basins in towns, in this town, that could be fixed. And there just, there are other uses for the funds, and I don't believe, and I'm not supporting this this evening, spending seventy thousand dollars on a vehicle when it's currently running and just because it has some rust. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Adams?
Maybe Heather can answer this real quick. I don't know if it was asked at the subcommittee meeting. How much has been the maintenance cost on this vehicle alone?
Recent maintenance cost on it hasn't been that high, but at thirty-five thousand miles, I actually have the invoice when the engine had to be rebuilt because of the problem that is known on these engines actually already had happened. So we already had a failure on this engine. As it's been explained to me, which I am not a mechanic, and I'm not going to even try to play one, but this diesel engine has been known to be problematic from the beginning. There are multiple articles. I actually looked it up online, these 2006. It has a engine that runs at high oil pressure. They can be, they're problematic. They're high, you have to take the whole cab off to fix it when you do. They're known to have it happen. I read a couple articles that says there's a whole cottage industry just repairing these trucks. So I understand what you're saying. It's a diesel engine. If it was a good diesel engine, like some of our other diesel engines, I'd completely agree with you, but it's a, probably a ticking time bomb to need another three thousand to four thousand dollars worth of work in recent, in upcoming years, just knowing because it has, it is known to have problems. In addition, the rust isn't just a little rust. If you look at the pictures that I sent and follow-up information, the whole utility body needs to be fixed or replaced. It's not really usable in the condition that it's in. It's going to continue to rust. There's rust on the frame. This is a highly aggressive area that it's in when it's down at the sewer plant. It's not, you know, sitting in somebody's garage that doesn't have that corrosive environment. I would want to respond to one thing. The seventy thousand dollars can only be used at the sewer plant. It's sewer enterprise funds. Catch basins aren't included in that. So yes, we do have costs in the sewer plant, but part of our cost is to keep our equipment and maintenance as down and practical and keeping the equipment in good working order. If it stops working, it's not any good to them.
Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Ms. Blakely. So I am looking at the rust. There's like, yeah, I mean, you can't keep anything in there. Why? What's the lifetime use of the truck before it starts rusting? Does it start rusting before? I mean, what's the cause of the rust, like it is, eating away at this and making the big holes?
The trucks and the body on it are fourteen years old now. It's, I had a fourteen-year-old vehicle too, and I loved it, and I wouldn't want to get rid of it at all, except for it rusted out from underneath me. At some point, it's going to happen, whether it's at a sewer plant or not at a sewer plant. Now, we, it, I'm not, you know, it has, it sits outside, sits in their, in their environment, sits in that hydrogen sulfide. We all sit there and complain about the smell. Well, the vehicle's sitting in that three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
I'm, I'm supporting this.
No, I know. I'm just asking that.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason, I mean, I can't say that's the only reason. I will say, we all know that they don't build the vehicles like they used to. And I don't, I do see that the rust and the rot are a lot on that utility body, which is an aftermarket part. It's not part of the original. But the fenders are rusting. There's other things rusting on this truck, too.
What would the cost be? Would it be cheaper just to replace the rusted part?
Well, I give supply you cost for the utility bodies to replacement kind. It's between nine and ten thousand dollars. We have two different quotes that they got. They could do repairs, probably in the three to four thousand dollar range, if they, depending on what the cost of the material materials are. But that still doesn't solve the long-term problem of the engine being a potential problem and other problems going to arise on a fourteen-year-old truck. Five, four years ago, there was a maintenance schedule for replacement on trucks put together. This is part of that maintenance schedule on trucks, to try to rotate them out so that we're not having to do major repairs on fifteen-year-old equipment. I understand that things are very costly and cost prohibitive, but if we just keep older and older trucks, we're going to have a problem where they're going to break down, and then you're not going to have them. Because then you're with, when you have to break down a truck and you're without it for repair, you're without a vehicle that you need to be used. You need your vehicles to be reliable and to have them when you need them. I totally understand that. But we, at a ten-year rotation basis is what we set our mind to, and a lot of places would tell you ten years is too long. But I think that we'll never get to ten years, so.
And this was approved.
This was approved last year in the capital budget.
So, yeah, money aside, so, thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Blakely answered both questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lazo?
Yeah, I'm not here to beat up one DPW director, but I'm familiar with diesels, six O's. I own a six O, I own a seven three. She's one hundred percent correct. They are very difficult to work on. You don't always have to lift the whole cab off of diesel. Sometimes you just have to unbolt it and raise the engine or do certain things. The thing is, do we have qualified mechanics on duty to work on these? Should they be sublet for repairs? I know I send mine out when it comes to the technical stuff and not the knucklebuster stuff, and it always comes back well-tuned. They go two, three hundred thousand miles. As far as rot, if you're not going to work on it and preserve it, and you just ride it until it rots, the vehicle will give way before the engine. And so you could have an engine with a hundred and some odd thousand miles on it, and then the toolbox is falling off the frame. That's a determination for somebody to look at the truck and determine whether this can be refurbished, put back together, maybe a new back body. I haven't seen the truck. I can't tell you. But my question to the DPW director, what does this truck do? Where is it used?
This is a sewer truck. It's part of, that it's used in the collection system to go around to do their different pump station rounds when they're doing work in the collection system, to hold their tools, to be a maintenance utility body truck. Right now, it's, you can see in the pictures that I sent, there's multiple body cabinets in there that they cannot use because it wouldn't hold the vehicle.
I mean, I know we're supposed to provide them with a truck, and what's hard to swallow for me is a seventy thousand. You're talking some bells and whistles on a four fifty, you know, and I do, those trucks, I mean, seventy thousand dollars, that's quite a truck. I'm having a hard time. I'm not saying you don't need it. It's just that, this is one of those decisions that it might not be at the top of my priority list. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Counselors Lazo, Marquetti, and Catrona opposed. Stand in recess for ten minutes. Reconvene at nine eleven P.M. Item 24, vote to ratify an engineering contract with tie and bond for proposed chemical modifications pilot study dated January fourteenth, 2020, for nine thousand eight hundred dollars. The contract cost would be paid from the water technical support capital account, number six one zero four five zero dash five eight three zero 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 dash two zero five eight three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Adams?
Done.
DPW?
The last one? Oh, it was four zero.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marquetti?
Could we just have some explanation about this? Some residents, residents wanted to know.
We'll have, DPW director?
Yep. So as you remember, we did what is called a jar test study on the taste and odor problems this spring that we, that we experienced for about a month in the springtime when the water changes odor, over. So the next stage to that taste and odor study would be to do an actual pilot test where we're running one of our filters with the chemicals that we'd be looking to add to see what the efficiency is on a fill scale trial. This is required if we ever wanted to make the upgrades and change over at the plant. The DEP requires that we run a pilot study, and that's what this would be for. We already have technical money set aside in the water budget this year to cover these type of testing. This is just the contract to be able to do that testing. This was a big, I think everybody knows that there's this period of time that we get more taste and odor and color complaints. This is to address those concerns, try to start addressing those concerns, I should say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Thank you, Heather. Have a good evening. Item 25, vote to approve moving forward with the 2020 recycle and IQ kick grant until authorized the inspections department to proceed to initiate and complete the grant application. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Lazo, this was on your subcommittee.
It was favorable at subcommittee.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Just to thank the inspections department for the presentation that they did at the subcommittee level. It was interesting to see the information that was brought forward and the progress that is being made by the activities that you had done under the current grant. So thank you for that, and hopefully expand on that, so to keep this as a sustainable project. Do you have anything you want to add, or is it, you're good? All right. Anybody else want to hear from Andy? We're good. All those in favor? Opposed. You're opposed, Counsel Lazo?
Yep.
Counsel Lazo is opposed. Motion carries. Item 26, vote to approve the request from Southbridge Public Schools to create a non-resident student tuition revolving account pursuant to match general law, chapter seventy-one, section seventy-one F. Tuition payment shall be deposited into the account and may be expended without further appropriation for expenses incurred providing education for such non-resident students. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Steves?
I guess through you, probably to either the manager or Karen. At the subcommittee meeting, I asked about whether or not this has to be turned, has to be amended into the bylaws, and I never did get an answer for that, and I'm sorry. I should have called back this afternoon, but I didn't think to do it.
All right.
So we need to clarify, because we do have a bylaw specifically listing all of our, all of our revolving accounts, and logically, this will be added to it.
Counselor Manah?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I believe the answer is no. You're correct that there was a bylaw to accept changes that allowed a certain accounts to be revolving funds, but I guess I would ask the Finance Director just to clarify exactly what that means, but I do not believe that this, there's, it has to be a change of bylaw every time we approve a revolving account.
I think it is, so.
This is being authorized under chapter seventy-one, section seventy-one F, so that does not have to be in the bylaws.
Okay. Counsel Adams?
I just wanted to, I didn't know what the vote was, since I wasn't there for that day.
Counsel Lazo, you know what the vote was at your subcommittee?
The vote was favorable at subcommittee?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 27, vote to approve a transfer of five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty cents from Town Council Reserve account number zero zero one one three two dot five seven eight one zero zero to Town prior year unpaid bill account number zero zero three one three five dot five eight nine nine zero zero dot nine zero nine five to pay for the fire department employee screenings to Hamilton Memorial Hospital Comprcare. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Manah, do you have a?
I already said at the beginning, thank you, Mr. Chair, everything that's on the agenda for the, for my meeting has been unanimously, all favorable.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 28, vote to approve a transfer of ten thousand dollars from salary and wages account, number zero zero one two two zero dot five one one zero 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 to repair maintenance of vehicles account, number zero zero one two two zero dot five two four one zero zero for unexpected costs for vehicle repairs to the fleet. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 29, vote to approve a transfer of two thousand dollars from safety and equipment account, number zero zero one two two zero dot five eight five six zero zero to repair and maintenance of equipment account, number zero zero one two two zero dot five two five one zero zero for increase to cost of maintenance contract and small engine repairs, which were not calculated during the setup of this account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 30, vote to approve a transfer of two thousand dollars from safety and equipment account, number zero zero one two two zero dot five eight five six zero zero to repair and maintenance of equipment account, number zero zero one two two zero dot five two five one zero zero. It looks like that's the same. Okay. We'll move on from that, then. Should be.
It should be from four three zero zero, so it's just, it's a typo, so if we read it correctly.
So amend, without objection, I'll amend it to the correct account number, zero zero one two two zero dot five two four three zero zero, repair and maintenance of buildings and Repair and maintenance of buildings and grounds in the amount of two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous all present. Thank you, Counsel Manager.
I knew there was another one for two thousand, it was two two thousand dollar ones. Item thirty-one, vote to accept the conditions of the 2020 firefighter's assistance grant to outfit two ambulances with powered stretches and loaded mechanisms. The total projected cost would be one hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. To continue the grant process, the project needs to have approval from this council for matching funds of five percent, which is six thousand two hundred and forty dollars of the total grant amount being one hundred twenty-four thousand seven ninety-eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Counsel Steve?
Yeah, one quick question. In our packet, there was a, the memo from Fire Chief Norman, and mentions installation for three ambulances, but only two complete stretcher systems.
Yes, installation for three ambulances, but it was two, I think you just maybe copied and pasted from last year's, possibly.
That's what I was figuring, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, that is, that is correct. It was, we took out one ambulance, because hopefully, we're thinking about getting a new ambulance to Capitol when we come up to that.
Okay.
And this, last year, we had applied for this grant, but unfortunately, did not receive it, and it was unanimous last year for this grant. So, for the short dollars, it's well worth the, the equipment cost. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous all present. Item thirty-two, vote to approve a transfer of twenty-eight thousand dollars from Salary Account Number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero to Account Number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-one-one-seven-zero-zero. Part-time salary to cover hours to assist with staffing issues. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous all present.
Item thirty-three, vote to approve a transfer of one thousand dollars from Salary Account Number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero to Account Number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-four-five-zero-zero-zero. Janitorial account to cover costs of cleaning and maintenance supply purchases through the end of FY 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous all present.
Item thirty-four, vote to approve a transfer of two thousand five hundred dollars from Salary Account Number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero to Account Number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-two-four-two-zero-zero data processing to cover internet and cable bills, as well as unexpected required software purchases through the end of FY 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous all present.
Item thirty-five, vote to accept the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State 911 Department Grant in the amount of fifty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars for the reimbursement of funds under the State 911 Department FY 2020 Support and Incentive Grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Any questions for the chief? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous all present.
Thirty-six, vote to accept the Commonwealth of Mass State 911 Department Grant in the amount of forty-nine thousand five, fifty-six, five hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-two cents for the reimbursement of funds under the State 911 Department of FY 2020 Training Grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Any questions for the chief? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous all present.
Item thirty-seven, vote to accept the Commonwealth of Mass State 911 Department Grant in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars for the reimbursement of funds on the State 911 Department FY 2020 Emergency Dispatch Grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Any questions of the chief? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous all present. Thank you, chiefs. Thank you, Heather. Have a good evening.
The next four items, I believe, one, two, next five items all involve reorganization of departments. First, vote to ratify the intermunicipal agreement between towns of Auburn, Charlton, Oxford, and Southbridge to consolidate formally the chapter one-hundred, one-fifteen operations to promote efficiencies to establish and operate the South Central Massachusetts Veteran Services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to kind of do my best, I apologize for my voice and stuff here, but I'm going to have to kind of tie these together a little bit in some respects these four, because in order to get support for the first one, you have to have some understanding of some of the future agenda items. Just to give the public a general understanding of what's going on here, we had a veterans' officer who served the town very admirably for many, many years, who sadly announced his retirement, he'll be leaving in March. And with that in mind, the veterans' agent for the town of Southbridge is sort of a multi-purpose gentleman. He does a variety of work. He's what we call a community, a community director, and he, as you know, he runs our community center, which includes our senior center and our recreation area, our recreation staff. He also runs the veterans' department, and he also takes care of IOD, which is injured-on-duty cases, and he also takes care of our registry building. So, he does a great deal of different things. That is normally not the case. Usually, you have separate veteran agents and separate community directors and a variety of different positions, but thankfully, he's been able to do all this work himself and kind of spread himself over a whole great deal of different areas. Knowing, when he announced his retirement, we decided, or I made a decision, that it would make a lot more sense to reorganize this department and separate, particularly separate the veterans' position from the community services position. I feel very strongly that the veterans in town need someone who will work directly on their issues. One of the things we have is we have a number of veterans who need these services, and they get these benefits, and we have a certain amount of cases that are ongoing, but we really need somebody who has the time to reach out to other veterans who are not being serviced. As you know, there's veterans coming back through a different, I won't call them wars, whatever, whatever you might call Iraq and Afghanistan. People are coming back and they need services, and often, they don't even know who to reach out to or don't get the help they need. So, this reorganization involves separating the two departments and having a full-time, what we call, and I'm going to read the specific title of district, Veterans Service Director. That would be one of the positions, and then we would have a separate position for a community, community center. Now, I want to be clear, what we did here, because what, a big purpose of this event was to try to do this within our current budget. As I said, right now, we have one person doing both jobs. I felt very strongly that we needed both, two different full-time positions, and at the same time, I believe the taxpayers are paying enough, so we wanted to do this within existing budget. Thankfully, our current community director's salary was higher, and we have what's called a veterans' district right now, that is currently comprised of the town of Charlton and the town of Southbridge. And it was, it was intended back then, a number of years ago, when they created this district, that eventually, the towns of Auburn and Oxford would be included in this district. What this reorganization does is includes those two towns. Currently, the town of Charlton pays the town of Southbridge sixteen thousand dollars, and we provide them one day a week with a veterans' agent, and they also provide some clerical work on behalf of the town, but they give us sixteen thousand dollars a year for that service. Oxford and Auburn now joining the district, both of those two towns will each give the town of Southbridge eight thousand dollars. And the service we will provide under what the first motion is, an intermunicipal agreement, basically just has our, the new district veterans' service director, his responsibility to those two towns will be as follows. So, provide oversight of the district, so if they have any questions, any issues they want to call, they can call him and get answers from him or her. They can, once, once a quarter, the veterans' district person will meet with the two veteran agents. There's a current part-time veteran agent in the town of Auburn, and a part-time veteran agent in the town of Oxford. On a quarterly basis, they'll meet with them, just to go over the different cases that are on, you know, in those towns, to make sure all the paperwork and everything is being done correctly. Also, electronically, we can actually review all of the cases that are going on in any of the towns. So, this district veterans' service director, who will be based in Southbridge, will be a Southbridge employee, will be able to electronically, through his computer, look at the cases in the other towns and review, and just, again, make sure that the paperwork is correct. So, it doesn't entail a lot of work for, involved in Auburn and Oxford, but we will be receiving a total of sixteen thousand dollars from those two towns. An issue came up, just to be clear, this, this got a negative recommendation in subcommittee, and I'll, I'm going to explain part of it, there may be other reasons, but one of the major issues that came up in subcommittee was that a number of councils, counselors, particularly actually Counselor Adams, had found that in our bylaws, it required a graves' officer to be a resident of Southbridge, and since the graves' officer, the graves' officer is required to be the veterans' district officer, it made it clear that this position had to be a Southbridge resident who filled this position, and Chairman Jovan made that point very clear, and a number of counselors felt very strongly that if we were to hire this position, that it should be a Southbridge resident. Under state law currently, it must be a veteran. So, this position, the person that would fill this position would have to be a veteran and would have to be a citizen of Southbridge, and later, as we get into the job description, we've clarified in detail that. This intermunicipal agreement, which is before you, allows a lot of benefits, in my opinion. One, let me clarify how it benefits some other towns, because that's part of the district, and all of the towns that are involved want to have some benefit from this. Well, it benefits them because with their population, state law would require them to have full-time veteran agents, which would cost them more money. By joining the district, they no longer have to be a full-time veteran agent, they can stay with the part timers, and we have the one full-time person who overlooks the district. So, there's some cost savings in them, and even though they're, they're paying us eight thousand dollars, even though they're not getting a lot of work for that, they get that benefit of not having to have a full-time director. That's their benefit. Our benefit is that we are being subsidized for this, for this position between Charlton and the two towns, about thirty-two thousand dollars in subsidy for our position. Now, our position will be a regular full-time veteran agent for the town of Southbridge, and allow our person to provide more services to veterans, so I think that's a totally positive thing. Also, you know, something I didn't say in the subcommittee, but I want to point out that the, another positive thing I think to this is, Southbridge is being recognized as a leader in the district, and taking a leadership role, and it's really nice to see other towns look at us as a leader and come to Southbridge to work together with us to improve services to veterans, and do so frankly, at a lower total cost. So, I think that's a real positive. I want to thank our current veterans' agent, Mike Trombley, who supports this, has looked at this, has worked with me and the other towns involved to make sure that this agreement was fair, reasonable, and benefited veterans, so I want to congratulate him for this. Now, the second part of this is that we would have a separate, full-time community services director. Just wanted to be clear. So, the community center director will now focus strictly on issues that favor, that help our senior citizens. As you know, we are trying to grow activities at our senior center, and we want to continue to provide the best quality services, so this person will be able to, once again, commit to working on just those type of issues. One of the things that we want to work at there is the same thing. We need to get seniors who are perhaps in assisted living facilities, who are lonely and locked into their own units, who are afraid to come out and socialize. We want to attract them to come to our senior center, to provide a healthy, positive environment for them, so I think that this reorganization will tremendously benefit our seniors as well. So, not only will veterans benefit, but the seniors will benefit. We have a fabulous program director who we're looking at bringing up into this new position, because the seniors frankly love her, we think she'll do a great job, and she'll be a tremendous benefit, and she's in place and knows the position very well. So, just to kind of go through, the key issue here that I think a lot of people are concerned about is, how does this work financially? Because as I said, we want to do this within an existing budget. There's no additional cost to taxpayers. So, the current salary of the community services director, and this is all in a memo from me to you, is eighty-three thousand three eighty-six. You add in the new contribution of sixteen thousand dollars from Auburn and Oxford, eight thousand dollars apiece, that gives us ninety thousand five eighty-six. The new district veterans' service director will be sixty-three thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents. That goes into our salary classification range, and we'll be hiring immediately, we'll be posting that job immediately, because we're trying to get somebody in. Would love to have our current community service director work with that person to educate him about, you know, changes and things about Southbridge specifically. The salary of the community service director is basically right now funded halfway by a grant. The additional funding to make it full-time will be twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and essentially, the town will save approximately eight thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents from what we currently spend. Now, I do want to note that as part of this plan, since our former community service director handled IOD, we need somebody to do that work. We're proposing that in this year's fire budget, and maybe even some small transfer or work this year, we want to add two hours to the confidential clerk position at the fire station to be able to pick up this IOD work. I was asked if there was any conflict, because she's a public safety employee, the answer is no. This person really is clerical and does clerical work and doesn't make any decisions, while IOD cases are decided on by myself, the town attorney, and the town's doctor. I also checked in, at least one of the members said, is there anyone else that could do this? I met with the police chief and fire chief to discuss this, they both feel, feel that the confidential clerk of the fire department would be the best person for this position, and encouraged me to keep going forward with that. The last component of this is the registry building. DPW is going to take over control and maintenance of the registry building to take that out. So, this is a complete reorganization of the department, one that saves us money, improves services for both veterans and for senior citizens, saves us money, and makes us, in my opinion, a leader in the district. So, I do, I'm going to wait to go over the changes of the job description, but what's important, I'll tell you now, because it's important for the intermunicipal part, is that the job description now requires this person to be a resident of the town of Southbridge, which was the significant issue debated. I appreciate counsel's input on that matter. I took your input, the, the chair and the, Counselor Adams was correct, if you, the bylaws are a little funky, but in fact, the way it's written, it has to be a Southbridge resident, and, Mr. Chairman, I hope that answers the part one and kind of gives us an idea of the whole package. Thank you.
So, the discussion will center around the intermunicipal agreement and the veterans' offices position only at this time. Just to make it clear, we won't take on the senior center, because we're talking specific to the municipal agreement and veterans' services director. Counsel Lozo?
The, the recommendation was not favorable from subcommittee, but, and I was going to make a motion to refer this back to subcommittee because of the changes and it being a Southbridge resident now, I think that was part of the biggest argument over the thing, was that we wanted a local resident as the veterans' agent. So, I, I would like to reconsider and urge my counselors that voted not in favor to reconsider. I only have, again, the recommendation was not favorable, but when you come out of subcommittee not favorable, and the document changes to some of the things, and as a compromise, I think that the counselors also have to keep an open mind, that the manager made a move more to the center on some of the issues. I only have one other, I'm going to offer an amendment. I would like to eliminate the bachelor's degree in business administration. Not that I think it's a bad thing, but I think it narrows the, narrows the job description, and I think to leave it open for the manager's interpretation for the best candidate, instead of the bachelor degree, bachelor's degree in business administration. I don't think that's a prerequisite, I don't think that's a mandatory. Our last veterans' agent didn't have it, so if we can, if I can offer an amendment, it would be proper at this time.
That would be under the job description on the next agenda. So, this would be.
Right now, the only thing I can do is I can recommend to the counselors for Education Human Services to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
So, so, thank you. Just to be clear here, and I gave it to the chairman, and truthfully, I don't care about it, but the way this is, the way the charter says, this has to be voted a package, it can be voted up or down, my thing, so if there's a change, it implies I have to agree to it, so just to make it clear, I agree to your change. For the record, that I'd be willing to support that, so that it goes through without any problem.
With all due respect to the town manager, I know you did send that to us. The charter states a plan can be voted up or down, not the job description itself. A plan, reorganization plan of a department, but not the individual job description.
That's fine.
So I respect that. My reading of the charter, it says the reorganization plan itself, but not the job description. We can take that up. Council Manah?
So we're not talking about the job description?
No, we're talking about the agreement right now.
So we should be focusing on the agreement of the job description?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council Steve?
Through you to the manager. I know when we were talking about it, it hadn't gone through to the other towns yet. Where does it stand as far as they stand?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. All the towns are taking it up as it's drafted. They are taking it up at different times, and so I'm not sure that any of them have done it yet, but they're all within the next two-week period.
Council Steve, just a point of information. I did go to the town of Auburn's website today, looked at their agenda. It's on for this evening for the town of Auburn. Other towns, I'm not sure.
And are they specifically aware of the must-be resident of Southbridge clause?
Are they aware of what?
Are they aware of the must-be resident of Southbridge clause?
As a matter of fact, through you, Mr. Chairman, I did have that discussion, particularly with the town of Auburn. But truthfully, it's not up to them because this is a Southbridge position. So it's ours to do with what we want. We're talking about specifically the job description, so it's really not an issue.
Okay. I'm, you know, I support the plan. I wish we had gone about it a little earlier in the, yeah, I'm not going to belabor that point because it comes up. Because it is important, and Mr. Trumbly is retiring unfortunately, and so we have to make sure that we get this posted and do adequate due diligence to find the best employee for the town of Southbridge. And that's all I want, is the best employee for the town of Southbridge. I have no horse in the race. I just want the best. But I believe our Southbridge veterans, if we're the, my point was, if we are servicing, and it's a veterans' agent for the town of Southbridge, we needed a local person. That's why I advocated for that. And just as a further point of information, just to be clear, and Mr. Trumbly can correct me if I'm wrong, we had already been providing Veteran Services Director services to the towns of Auburn and Oxford without any formal agreement. Is that correct? Based on like an unofficial official? Well, you want to go to the mic?
In answer to your question, Mr. Chairman, I believe it was 2017 is when I actually started to provide services for Auburn and Oxford, which were not going to their communities.
Right, no.
Telephone services, oversight, et cetera, et cetera, but not going into their communities. Charlton was the only community that I had travel in. In 2019, I did on one occasion, or two occasions, go in and assist Auburn with a part-time Veterans Service Officer that was sick.
Yeah.
So I did cover for them. But as far as anything beyond oversight and just information, that's about as far as it went.
And I certainly have no problem with that at all. We should always be good neighbors to our surrounding communities. I just, so essentially, so I guess my question is this. You've been doing this already. There really is no substantive change outside of a formal agreement. Would that be correct? Because we've already been, you've already served as the veterans' agent for the town of Charlton, based on the agreement that we've had with them, and they've been paying us $16,000. You've been providing these ancillary services to make sure, because they needed it in order to keep their status as part-time, correct?
Correct.
In a town, in all three towns, correct? No, you acted as the agent in Charlton, so they didn't have anybody.
They didn't have anybody.
They had clerical support though, right? That they provided, did they provide clerical support?
Yes, yes. They have a full-time, a full-time clerical. She's, she's part-time for Veterans Services as far as clerical, but she's full-time as a town administrator's assistant.
Oh, okay. All right. So that's all. Like, again, I have no problem on it. It's just more of a formality of what we've been providing to Auburn and Oxford for free. We will now gain a benefit to the town of Southbridge to the cost of $8,000.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it that evening to the meeting. And while we've got Mr. Trumbly up here, I just, I wanted to verify either the general law or the regulation that states that they have to be a veteran as a Veterans Service Officer. Do you have that? Do you know that off topic yet?
I did not get back to your email this morning because I could not find it neither. There is, there is a Massachusetts general law that does state that a Veterans Service Officer for the state of Massachusetts must be an honorably served discharged veteran. I can't give you the number because I couldn't find it myself.
Okay, so the reason why I bring that up, because it's a good point, because everybody assumes it automatically as a veteran, as a Veterans Service Agent, right? So we would say, you know, that's a no-brainer right there. But my concern, when I looked at our own bylaw, you know, where does it say, eh, Southbridge resident, whatever it may be? So what I did was I broke this down a little bit to make sure if there wasn't, because under Massachusetts law, a veteran is an honorably discharged individual because other discharges are deemed not to be. All right? They lose a lot of benefits because of that. But I wanted to explain, under the Veterans Service Director that we have by our bylaw right now, under the, to be the Veterans Service Director, according to our bylaw, under Section 7 of the Massachusetts law of 115, must be a veteran. That's the burial agent. If you go under Massachusetts law 114, 46 Alpha, which is the Graves Officer, even though that specific general law doesn't state it has to be a resident of the town, if you look under the Massachusetts law 115, it says it has to be, under, I think, Section 9, it has to be a Southbridge resident or a resident of the town. So I wanted to clarify, so this is where we found, and I know there was a lot of concern because it didn't talk about the Southbridge resident, whatever it may be, but this bylaw states it, and so we're required, so I'm glad to see that the town manager implemented that under the job description, which I, while we're speaking here, and one thing that I did miss, and I saw it just earlier, under the position purposes, which is under the district Veterans Services Director, MS 15, it does say must be a resident of Southbridge, but under the recommended minimum qualification, that I would, off topic, has to be added as a Southbridge resident because it's not in there.
So one will get to that.
Got it. I understand. I just wanted to throw that out there. I did have a couple of other things. I'm going to make it very clear, after hearing what had transpired and what I read, I wasn't in support of the director unless it was a Southbridge resident and a, obviously, a veteran. Those things have changed. Council Steve's brought up the point about other towns, have they approved it? You know, my only concern here is we recommend that, or we approve it tonight, but what happens if one of the three falls through? Where do we go from there? Maybe the town manager can answer that for us.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. First of all, that would be highly unexpected because it benefits them as well as us, so it'd be surprising. All of the town managers are going to be leading the effort to have their group support this. But if it did go down, we would have to come together and renegotiate something else or end the district or do something else. So I'm not expecting that. I don't believe it would be in the best interest of any of the four towns, but in fact, it can happen, so we would have to come back to the table and figure out what our next path would be.
But in the end state, we can vote on a Veterans Service Director for our town, right? Okay. I just want to make sure that's moved on. And under, the one other question I had about this whole thing was the Community Services Coordinator that you plan on utilizing.
Yep.
I asked about possible cost of living increases down the road. So $18,000 of that, $47,000 is grant money. But the 27,7 something, 27,000 is taxpayer funds, Southbridge taxpayer funds. If there, if the town council were to vote for an increase in taxes, or not, cost of living, I'm sorry, increases, what would that 1%, 2% be based off of? $47,000 or the 27,000 something that's come straight from our own, our own treasure?
Council Adams, I'll create a little leeway because we're talking about the intermunicipal agreement only.
I apologize.
That would go with the salary schedule?
Okay.
Can you wait for that?
I can wait for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is a point of process?
Sorry.
That's all right. Council Lozo?
Again, I just want to reiterate, at subcommittee, we had much discussion. I think the town manager heard the councilors, and the councilors heard the town manager. And if there's a, a meeting in the middle on the residency to be from Southbridge, I think that was the main carryup. There's a lot of times we appoint people from Southbridge, we did it with the building inspector, where they have to go out and get certain training or certification. And I hope that we give the same courtesy to Southbridge residents. I'm sure we will. I'm just mentioning that as an example of past practice. And I think that with that in mind, and with a couple amendments under the job description discussion, I think we're going to be fine, and I urge all councilors to support this new plan. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the agreement? The agreement only? Seeing none, roll call to ratify this agreement.
Council Lozo?
Yes.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes. Okay. Item 39, vote to approve the revised district Veterans Service Director MS 15 job description. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Town Manager?
So thank you. I'm just going to go through the changes that were made to this job description so it's clear, and I'm going to recommend slightly some new amendments based upon some comments that were made. First, in the position purpose, the last line says must be a resident of Southbridge. That's new language to deal, as we said. I'm going to ask that that be amended to say must be a resident of Southbridge and a veteran, just to make sure there's clarification of that as well. Also, if you go down about three-quarters, under essential functions, it says shall be required to attend military types of ceremonies. The wording used to be may. I changed the wording to shall to make sure that that was in place. The next line is new, coordinates and supervises the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day in Southbridge in conjunction with the Veterans Councils. That's new language, and I think that was brought forward by Councilor Adams. Also, the VSO arranges for the lowering of all flags on occasions of public mourning and upon orders from the Massachusetts Governor and the President of the United States, again, as for Southbridge. Those are all the changes. And based upon the further comments, the recommendation of going to do all this in one amendment, that we strike out the bachelor's degree in business administration, social services, or related field. That was recommended to be changed as well. And then in the, just so you know, I thought there was one other place where you wanted to be a Southbridge resident. Is that in the job description?
Job description.
Under what section? Education, training, experience, where did you want to put it?
I would recommend must be.
How about education, training, experience was just added there? There must be, once again, it must be a Southbridge resident and veteran. Is that clear? Those would be the recommended changes I would like to make to this document.
Okay. Council Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I don't see why you would have to put in must be a Southbridge resident twice. I think right here in the position purpose and the description right there, must be a resident of Southbridge and a veteran suffices. And then for the education, training, and experience, it's not required that they have a bachelor's degree. It's desirable. I like that language in there. Bachelor's degree in business administration, social services, related field, desirable. You could put a comma in there, but not a requirement. You could put that in there. I think we should leave that in there. I mean, the salary for this position reflects the language and the educational requirements. So I think bachelor's degree in business administration, social services, or a related field is desirable but not required would suffice.
Yeah, just, you comment about having to put veteran, must be a veteran on the first page. You already have it in the training and experience. It says must be an honorably discharged veteran in accordance with Massachusetts law. It's in the job description. It's in the MS job description. Minimum qualification, you must be an honorable discharge veteran. So it's already in there, so there's no reason to put it on the front page because it is a required minimum qualification, you must be. It doesn't say desirable, it says must be. It's in the job description, so I don't think you need to put that first on the, on the first, first page because it's already there. In regards to the, your comment, Council Lozo, I know you had a comment.
Oh, no. My comment was strictly on the bachelor's degree.
Yep.
You're narrowing the field when you do something like that.
So, so can I answer, could I respond to your comment? I'll go back to our appointment of the fire chief. Job description for the fire chief said that a bachelor's degree was desirable. And then when we had the conversation about the bachelor's degree, it was, well, it's a combination of, by the time we got done, that it was the best person for the job, didn't have a bachelor's degree, although the job description itself said bachelor's degree was desirable, it went on a basis of, of experience. So it wasn't a limitation to the individuals that applied for the job. Just as a point of information, that, that's what happened with the fire chief's position. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I just wanted, the town manager had said something about the helping out the Veterans Council within town. This is actually, this information came from mass.gov, and it talks about, in addition to employment requirements, the committee recommends that any district proposal contain a full job description of the Veterans Service Officer that reflects the following, and that's one of those bullets within it. So I just wanted to make clear that it, I didn't make that up. It came right out of the book. Thank you. That's all I have.
Do you have any follow-up to that, my comment? Do you have any follow-up to my comment or Council Adams' comment?
No, I looked at it differently, that's all.
Okay.
And, you know, if, yeah, it does says, it does say recommended minimum qualifications and not mandatory, and I get it. It's just that I want to make sure that a Southbridge resident that is a veteran, that lives in town, that has an opportunity to get this job, and if he has to, you know, get a certification or whatever, we'll work with him like we do with all the other department heads. That's all I'm looking, working for. I think you'll understand the intent.
So, just so we're clear, because there was a couple of changes made, what were the exact changes that you're going to make to this before we take any further action on this? Just so, Council Manah, do you have a follow-up question?
I just like, I like the language. Council Adams stated that it was a bullet point that he pulled out of, and I don't think we should remove it if we want to change it, you know?
What's that you're talking about?
Bachelor's degree.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah. I mean, put a comma in front of desirable but not required, period.
All right, so let me just try to clarify it, and hopefully I heard clarity, right? So it really goes back to, as I have given it to you, just leaving it where it says must be a resident of Southbridge, not adding the veteran there because it's already in a later section. We accept the shall, and we accept the two bullets, coordinates, and supervises, and we accept the VSO, and then we leave, we leave it in with the bachelor's degree desirable. We just leave that section the way it is. That's the way I heard it.
Desirable but not required.
But not required.
But not required.
You want to add in the words not required?
That's what I would do.
But not required.
What do you think, Council Adams, your input?
You know, I think just leave it the same right there because it's all recommended minimum qualifications. To me, it's just a recommendation, and they can go off of, but there is a requirement to have a high school diploma, period. So I have no problem with the language. That's it right now. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any further discussion on this? Go ahead, Council Manah.
Just one more thing. So are we voting on this tonight with the changes, or are we going to wait for the changes to come back to us?
As amended. No, that's the next step. First, we got to do the intermunicipal.
Do we vote the intermunicipal?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right then, yes.
So, so we're going to, it's not going to come back to us?
Right, because he has to post his job because we have somebody retiring shortly.
Oh, that's right.
So, right, what date do you retire?
March.
March 17.
Oh, same happy birthday.
Council Daniel?
Yes, ways through you to Councilor Adams. It requires a high school diploma, but not a GED.
So what it, it's good that the town is actually saying that they should have a high school diploma, in my personal opinion. But, you know, it doesn't say, I don't think it says anywhere that, it just says an honorably discharged veteran, and those are the requirements in there. It doesn't even talk about GEDs, I don't think. I didn't see anything, Mike, that says it. But, but to me, first of all, let me just make something real clear, today's military is not, it has a high, it's like 97, 98% of the military has high school diplomas, higher than the national average, has a higher national average in college degrees than, than what we have here in civilian world. So I'm going to just tell you right now, the younger crowd that's coming up, my age and, and up, or younger, they're going to have those requirements, it's going to be a requirement for them. I think the Marine Corps alone takes one GED or two GEDs per year based on their ASVAB scores. That's it. So I recommend leaving it at high school diploma.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor as changed? unanimous of all present. Item 40, vote to approve the revisions to Schedule 1 to reflect the revised District Veteran Service Director MS 15 position effective July 1, 2020. Second. Discussion?
Yeah, just for you, this Schedule 1 just reflects the new position with the salary that it's at, which is significantly lower than the current one.
So, just a question, Mr. Town Manager, if we hire somebody in March, what do we, we got to do this effective March?
Well, we never going to be able to hire somebody that quickly, I doubt, but this is, this is, this is designed to start effectively July 1, but we're going to have to fill somebody in from the time he leaves till July, and we're going to use current salary to do that, so we might have to, we may, hopefully not, I doubt it, but come for some kind of budget adjustment if we need to. Right? So it'd be effective right away for your position, but we, I don't think we'll need a budget adjustment, but we might have to come back for an adjustment, but I don't believe so. So.
I would say we have to do it effective March 17th, because you're going to, you're going to adjust the salary, but it has to be adjusted to that position.
Yeah, the first part.
To the MS 15, correct?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay?
I would agree with Counselor Jovan, yes, that we would want to do it, yes, that we would want to do it effective for March.
March 18, 2020.
Yeah, we're going to have this.
Could get a friendly amendment for that?
March 18, is that where we're going?
Second.
Make it effective March 18, 2020. All those in favor of the amendment?
Thank you, Jack.
Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Didn't think of that.
Vote to approve the revised Community Service Director S10 job description, is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Town Manager?
So effectively, all the duties that were in the current Community Service Director were simply moved into this new job description to make this specifically to the services provided, you'll see, it says includes council on aging and provides oversight to the Recreation Department, but it's effectively very much what it was, just, just to make it a single position.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Vote to approve the revision to Schedule 1 to reflect the revised Community Service Director S10 position effective July 1, 2020, is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Counselor Steves?
Shouldn't that be also March 18?
Yeah, same adjustment.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
All those in favor on the amendment? Opposed, any further discussion on the question as amended? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There you go, now it's time.
Now I got it. Sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit, I went too fast. So the question again is, the Community Services Coordinator's, I talked about the raises, you got it.
Alright, so if I could respond to you, Mr. Chairman, so, and then I'm going to check with Mike as well, but generally, this is a long-time grant, that comes to the community, it's applied for every year, usually this grant goes up by a little bit every year, so I can't say for sure because I don't know what the state will do in terms of the increase, but if, if we can adjust for the increase in that part of the salary, we will, and then the, what's left would be adjusted through the taxpayer component. Does that make sense to you?
It does, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Just a quick question, seems like it would function the same way as the CDBG grant does for certain, for certain offices down in that office, certain people down in that office, so how does, how does, how do we handle that?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand your comparison.
I'm thinking the CDBG grant pays part of, for example, Rosemary's salary.
Percentage wise, right.
Yeah, and how, so how do we handle that? Do we, do we pay for her raises, or is it shared between us and the grant? Because we, oh, it'd seem to be the same thing, so.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm using this as a comparison for this.
Through you, the CDBG position itself, I think is fully funded, but Rosemary's position is partially funded by her, by the town and the CDBG grant. So as part of the application, they put in the amounts of what percentage that they want funded, I think the same would be true of the senior grant, but Mike, if you applied for this and you were, part of your application process, if the salary went up by 2% or whatever, you could, as part of your application process, put in the new amount reflecting the new increase in the cost of living?
Providing you don't exceed the total amount that the state is offering to give you, because it's all based on the amount of senior citizens in each community, times, at this particular time, for 2021, it was, it's based on $12 per senior in the community. So if you do increase the salary line item in that portion of the, of the formula grant, you got to reduce it somewhere else because you can't go over the cap line.
Right.
If that makes any sense.
That makes sense.
Yeah, just through you, one question, and I got to tell you, you applied for the grant, I don't remember that, every year that grant goes up slightly anyway, no?
Not, not every year, it went up $2 in the past three years.
No.
So it doesn't go up by much.
Okay.
Every couple of years.
Counselor Steves?
Yes, thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Counselors forum. Counselor Lazo?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I have to say thank you to Mike Trombley, I was very honored to appoint you as a counselor back in the day, and now I salute you on the way out the door. Thank you very much for your service.
He's got a couple more weeks, hopefully we see him before he goes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, Counselor Marketti?
I don't really have a lot tonight, one resident wanted me to ask if there's a plan for painting the crosswalks downtown, so I told him I would ask.
I think the DPW does that every year, it's part of their regular maintenance.
Says it hasn't been done in a while, and he wanted to know.
Just, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, a couple years back, I think we purchased a line painting machine, and the guys do it, in the beginning of the year, they go out and do all the crosswalks, particularly they first focus on the center of town, and then they work out from there. So it is our power to, it saves us a significant amount of money by doing it ourselves, so we do have the ability to look at any crosswalk we want at any time to be able to do that. So really, if you, if it's something you don't believe is getting done, or a particular crosswalk, please just email me that crosswalk, and I'll make sure I forward it to the DPW Department.
Alright.
Counselor Marketti, was it downtown specifically?
Downtown, yes.
Because I know, early spring, I know we, they had traffic patterns all messed up down there for doing it, I know it gets worn pretty easily, but we'll pass it on to the DPW.
Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Anything further? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple things I wanted to, I know Mike's got a few more weeks here, but he's been really helpful with the Veterans Council and everything else, even though I know he's got one foot trying to walk out that door, but we keep pulling him back in, so I want to thank him, and I'll, I'll continue to do so, and I just wanted to say thank you to the town council too, by the way, so you're going to see, see other things popping up from the Veterans Council, and I just want to thank you, continue to thank you for your support, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
I've got a couple of quick things, first off, I just wanted to mention that there is a Train the Trainer event for the 2020 census at the Southbridge Library on Wednesday, February the 12th. So it's going to be a big need for people to get involved and, and to go out there and actually, you know, survey our neighbors and our residents to make sure that we get the, an adequate response and get some, because it's all about both representation and money from the federal government, so if you can get involved, you know, please do. And the other thing is also at the library, which is a, there's a right to vote event going on at 6:30 on Thursday the 20th, so you might want to check that out, and that's all I had.
Thank you. And just to reflect on what Counselor Steve said, it's very important, answer that 2020 census, because what Mr. Trombley just said, $12, that's all based on your census, so you got to make sure we get that census materials in and outreach to as many people as you can to get that census completed. Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Manah?